And then do I just call the meeting to order when everybody's in, Matthew?
Yeah, and I can let you know, we've got two people that are still trying to join. And we're down to, we've got about three more now. Everyone that was pre-waiting is in, so Jesse, we're good to go.
We don't have to talk at all. There's no reason for us to. We're not board members.
Okay, everybody, it is 5:35. We are going to get started with the Planning Board meeting. Welcome, everyone. If you wouldn't mind putting yourselves on mute, I hear a little bit of background noise. That'd be appreciated. Thank you. I suppose we need to start with roll call and approval of meeting minutes. So I will start us off with roll call. Shannon Holmes.
Present.
Melissa Newt.
Present.
Brian Conkle.
Here.
Taya Cromley.
Present.
Stacy Jovic.
Present.
And Jesse Wilcox. And we also have Matthew Menard on the call. Oh, did I miss Tori?
Present.
Sorry, Tori. Okay, I think I got everybody. Matthew Menard is on the call as well tonight, Deputy City Planner. Um, all right, well, let's get started. I wanted to just read a quick address to get us going here this evening. It'll be short and sweet, but I wanted to just say thank you all for the opportunity to serve as Chair of the Livingston Planning Board. I'm honored to facilitate the work of the group. We have a very busy four months ahead of us, and tonight we get to start digging in. I want to thank Brian for being such a good role model and to Stacy for taking minutes. Thanks also to the Commission for allowing the Planning Board the extension to work on the growth policy. And thanks very much to Matthew and city staff for providing timely updates to the draft growth policy and for attending these meetings, keeping us informed and being available for questions. So before we get started, I want to just address a couple of housekeeping items. I think we're going to stay consistent with the Commission meetings, so public comment is going to be limited to three minutes. And please provide only one comment per agenda item. So we will only be addressing the topics on the agenda this evening. If we start to veer off topic, I'm going to try to ask that pause and bring it back to the agenda item. And hold conversations on future chapters of the growth policy to the schedule that we have outlined, and you can find that in this packet. And then thank you again to Matthew for putting the packet together this evening. These are the areas of the growth policy we'll be addressing tonight. I appreciate all the comments, both written and verbal. When they're in writing, these comments may be addressed into the draft growth policy and allow us time to consider prior to our meeting. So I thank the community for providing comments in that way. And this is the time many of us have been waiting for, when the Planning Board can start digging into the document and approve the city's changes or recommend changes by section. So we have an ambitious schedule, and the Planning Board is ready to roll up her sleeves and get to work. So I wish us all the luck, and we're going to get started. Let's see. So next up, Matthew's going to give a staff update on Planning Board administration and meeting format.
Um, Jesse?
Yeah.
Did we approve the minutes?
Oh, no, we didn't.
Okay.
I'm in, sorry for my newbiness. Would anybody like a motion to approve the last minute minutes?
This is Brian. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Brian, first. Was that Shannon, second?
Correct.
We'll go through roll call again. Shannon Holmes.
Four.
Brian Conkle.
Four.
Stacy Jovic.
Four.
Melissa Newt.
Four.
Tori.
Four.
Taya.
Four.
And Jesse is four. Okay. We've approved the meeting minutes. Thank you, Stacy. Okay. Matthew, are you ready to give the staff update on the Planning Board administration and meeting format?
I am. So just very quickly, with the new chair and a new year, to streamline the meetings a little bit, we're going to basically run the meetings in the same way that the city commission meetings are run, which means that for pretty much every item, I will introduce that item, just like the city manager would with the city commission. We will then take time for board questions and then public comments and then board discussion and motions. I know we've been doing public comment after the motions. That has made the meetings extraordinarily long. So we're going to do all of the public comment prior to the motions. The other thing about public comments is if you could all keep them as concise as possible, that makes things go quite a bit smoother. I know it's tempting to take all of your time with the timer up on the board, but if you could be as brief as possible, there are a lot of people that would like to speak. Other than that, I think that is the full update I have for you. I'm happy if anyone has any questions from the board to answer those. Otherwise, we can move on to the next agenda item.
Does anybody have any questions for Matthew? Okay, hearing none, we will move into public comments. So please remember to state your name and your address. And Matthew, are you watching the chat to see who is prepared to give comments?
I see one raised hand right now.
Okay. Oh, wait, I can see that, too. So, oh, maybe I can.
And Jesse, really quickly, I would request that if you are, if people would like to make public comments at this time, they should be public comments on items that are not further down the agenda. So if the comment you would like to make is further down the agenda, being either the freeholder requirements, the maps and the growth policy, or the extraterritorial jurisdiction, I ask that you hold those comments until that agenda item.
Thank you.
And the first hand we have here is Kenneth Cochran.
Mr. Cochran, you're on mute.
I can't un, right, lower my hand. I'm speaking to the agenda items. So pass me up.
Okay. Okay, any other public comment?
We have one raised hand from Wendy Weber.
I was going to comment on the growth policy. I have to, I cannot stay on for the call, so I could either comment now or provide that in writing.
Um, maybe provide it in writing, Wendy?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
This is Jean Kefler, Madam Chair. I'm really sorry to interrupt, but I'm having a hard time raising my hand man, through the online thing and at the appropriate time. I would like to comment.
Okay, Jean, do you want to comment now prior to an agenda item?
No, I want to comment on the extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Okay, do you want, let's hold that comment then, Jean, until we get to that section of the agenda.
Thank you.
Sure.
Would ordinarily comment before me, just having a little bit of a hard time. Thank you very much for your forbearance.
Absolutely.
I'm just, I'm a little late. Will you repeat the question?
Sure, we are just starting out with public comment. And, and public comment at this point is only on items that the Planning Board has jurisdiction over and that are not comments based on agenda items that are coming up. Does that make sense? Perfect. And you know, I'm not seeing, I don't see anybody in the chat, so I'm trying to, to keep my eye on the chat, and I haven't seen any reactions either, so I don't know if that's just me not being able to see it or if there's something in there. Okay, I see Sarah. Sarah Stans, go ahead and, and make a comment, please.
I, I guess Sarah Stans, 217 Southeast Street, and I just had a question on your public comment process and some of that transparency. In order for us to be as most concise as possible and streamlining this whole thing, is there, is there the document or the spreadsheet that you guys had that, that has consolidated all of our comments so that we can reference that and how it was incorporated? I think, you know, reviewing the documents today, it was hard to know if we're supposed to be looking at everything that included a reference to a map, including the objectives and the strategies, or if we're only looking at the specific numbered maps. And so it was just, it was a little bit confusing on what we can and cannot comment on, and also where our comments have been taken into consideration. So I don't know if there's anything else you guys can provide that would help us throughout this multi-stage review process to help you get a better response from us. If that makes sense.
Matthew, can you address which, which growth policy renditions they have access to? Or have been sent?
Yes, so what they were provided is what you were provided in the packet today. At this meeting, we should only be discussing the items on the agenda, which are the maps and the extraterritorial jurisdiction. We will cover all of the sections, including all of the references in later meetings. This meeting, the maps and extraterritorial jurisdiction were requested to be first by the public, so we have done them first. But I would ask that we keep a very narrow view on, on the agenda and just talk about the maps and the extraterritorial jurisdiction, not everywhere they're referenced in the plan, because that'll end up being basically the whole plan.
And, and those sections were in the packet that was on the website for your, for you to be able to download and take a look at?
Yes, every map, I pulled every map out of the growth policy and the entire Appendix A, which is the extraterritorial jurisdiction, was also in that packet. And just to Jean's comment, if you can't raise your hand, we will get to you, just, just sort of call it your name at the end of public comment. Everyone gets a chance to comment, even if you can't raise your hand, so don't worry about that too much. And we do have one raised hand here, which is Leslie Feigl as well.
Okay, Leslie. State your name and your address.
Hi, so my question is 166 Miller Drive. And so here's my, my question is, is on the document that was on the city's website. It says public, they went through during the editing process, public comment, line by line, making edits. And then lower down below, it said the staff has made edits specifically to be responsive to comments. Did all, out of all the months that we've been holding these meetings, did all of the comments get sent to the Commission? And did all of the letters and all of the emails that you as the board has received, have they been given all of that documentation? That's, that's my question before we get into the body.
Okay, thanks, Leslie. All comments have been received and sent to the, to the city staff and the planning board, so yes.
Not the Commission, though. The Commission doesn't know about them? Just the city staff?
That is my understanding. Is that correct?
So basically, when we receive public comment, they get sent to the Planning Board and they get sent to the consultants. The city commission will receive all of the public comment in their packet when this item is moved on to them, so after the Planning Board makes a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. There is a comment, it looks like Jim Berg.
Yes, this is Jim Berg. I live at 223 South Fifth Street, Livingston. I'm also Chair of the Sounding Commission. I have a question about the recommended future land use map, Exhibit 11.2 on page 106.
Jim, do you want to reserve that comment until we get to that agenda item?
I certainly can. Is, is that appropriate?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, we're just taking for a general, general public comment, and then we get to that gen, agenda item, then you can comment on that agenda item specifically.
It was, there are some details that Matthew listed when he submitted this package to you, and I caught my eye that I wanted to talk about. So wherever you think it's appropriate for me to jump in, I'd be happy to do that.
Is it specific to the, to the agenda item, Jim?
I don't have the agenda.
Oh. Go ahead, Jim, make your comment. I'm sorry, I, I was trying to keep it, keep it in order so that we, we address the comments when it hits the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. One of Matthew's bullet points, page two of his memorandum states the following, included in the December edits are updates to the future land use map. Exhibit 11.1 is follows, expansion of the central business district land use type and update of the area south of Park Street adjacent to downtown to be shown as high density residential. So my question on that first point is, what do you, what does, I guess, Matthew mean by the central business district land use type? In the zoning ordinance, there is a chart, Table 30.40, which is a list of uses. Is that what he's talking about? The map on page 106 shows a much enlarged central business district. So is the intent there to enlarge the central business district to that whole area and to take areas which used to be R2 and make them now CBD uses?
Okay, thanks for your comment, Jim. Um, I think that this is public comment, and so maybe perhaps what we should be doing is taking note of this. And then we'll address the, the answers to your question as we go through the document. Yeah. Well, thank you for the, for the question and the comment, and we'll, we'll address that when we get to that section.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dave, Dave has a comment? Dale, David, I'm sorry, David has a comment?
Oh, that's okay. Yeah, no, I think Dale mentioned something, too. I just have a general, it is a general question. Is there, is there any kind of weights and measures?
Real quick, David, first, last name and, and address.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm kind of in a strange place for addresses. I guess my, my, my residence that, that I pay mortgage to is 521 East Montana Street in, in town, so it isn't in, in within the city zoning. And that actually relates specifically to my question. Is there a weights and measures intact that prioritizes a, a community members who have, who, who are first full, actually within the city limits versus county, and then also, also provides weight and measures and evaluative concern to the voices that are within a county that also come, come new to the Park County community from other places that have not spent their career paying taxes in such.
Okay. David, thank you for your comment and question. Stacy is taking minutes. And what we'll do is we, if we have time, we'll circle back and answer some of these questions after public, after we, when we get to these areas in the growth policy and, and after public comment. So thank you.
I didn't catch David's last name.
Oh, sorry, David Karon, K-A-R-O-N.
Thank you.
Jessica, I re-raised my hand because I do have a pre-agenda item comment.
Okay, I'm gonna, Ken, I'm gonna let Dale go first, and then you'll go next.
Perfect, thank you.
You got it.
It's Jessica, Dale Sexton, 323 North Main Street. And I apologize, I'm not able to locate the agenda, and I just want to make sure that I'm following protocol with regard to when I comment. I've gone to the city planning department website, and I'm not seeing the agenda on here.
So, Matthew, do you want to try and share your screen?
Yeah, let me do that quickly. So, let me pull it up very quickly, and then I will share my screen. So hopefully everyone will be able to see that shortly. So this is our webpage, livingstonmontana.org. If you are looking for the agenda, if you go to the government tab, right at the bottom, there's the city boards and committees tab.
Great.
Click on that city planning board, and you click on that, and then on the left here, there's a planning board documents area, and then under agendas for 2021, this is the current agenda packet, and that will open a PDF, and it will have the agenda and all of the materials that were provided to the planning board.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dale. Okay, Mr. Cochran, would you like to make your comment?
Yes, Jessica, I have a question. Sarah prompted it. During Brian's tenure, the public comments were four minutes, and I think you said, when you started this conversation, that the comments are now limited to three. Can you tell us why we have lost 25% of our time?
I can, really quickly, Mr. Cochran, we are going to be following the city commission form, form of meetings, and so they offer three minutes, and so we are going to follow suit with the city commission meeting format. So we are going from four to three.
Okay, I'm modifying on the fly. I might be a tick over when it's my turn, but I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
No problem, and we'll put the clock up, too, so if you need to start speaking fast towards the end, you can. Okay, is, is there any more public comment? I'll go one more time for public comment. I don't see anybody in the chat or with a thumbs up, so if you can't figure out how to do either, then just shout it out. Okay, we're going to close public comment. Thank you all very much. And bear with me, I'm new to the role, so I'm going to give it a good go tonight. All right, we're going to move on to old business. The update on the resident freeholder planning board requirement memo to the city commission. So last meeting, you'll recall that I was asked to, to create a draft to send to the city commission. And so I want the planning board members to be able to review this, this memo. And I believe we will need to vote on whether we are going to send it to the commission. I will let you know that I attended the commission meeting last night. And it was great conversation from both the community comments and from the, the commissioners. They were supportive of trying to remove this freeholder requirement from our city ordinance. They were also very supportive of Livingston throwing their hat in the ring and, and heading to Helena to try and get this changed as well. One thing I, I did after our last meeting is I spoke with Lori Bishop, one of our local reps. And she mentioned to me that she had a conversation with the Montana Leagues of Cities and Towns. And they are actively pursuing a bill to be presented to the legislators in 2023. It's sort of a broad land use bill, and this, removing this freeholder requirement is a part of that bill. And so they, the woman she, she had spoken with had mentioned that in order for them to build support and do their job as lobbyists to get this, to get support for this bill to pass in 2023, that she requested that, you know, our city commission doesn't take any major actions at the legislative level at this time. So, so that's sort of drumming up support from, from multiple stakeholders across the state, other communities, and, and having the, that lobbyist group really get the, the support they need to get that bill passed in 2023. So with that, it sounds like the city commission may be interested in looking at some other options. So that's really promising, and, you know, thanks to this board and to the public comment in, in, you know, coming behind and coming together to, to, you know, oppose and remove the language from our local ordinance. So let's take a look at the, the memo, and I'm just going to open it up to board questions first. So does anybody have any questions? I can give you a minute to take a look. Does anybody on the board have any questions about the memo?
No question. Chair Wilcox, just want to thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome. Thank you, Taya. Okay, if there are no questions, um, do we open it up now to public comment? Matthew?
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay. So we'll open up public comment on the resident freeholder requirement. So for this agenda item, we're taking public comment. So if you have a comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand or put your name in the chat. David, I see your hand up. Do you have a comment?
I guess it's more so just another question to garner more information regarding this proposal. So.
I know it's repetitive, David. I'm really sorry. We have to get your name and address again.
I'm sorry, my, my name and agenda?
Your address.
Oh, address, address. David, David Karon, 5521 East Montana Street in, in town here, Livingston. I guess I'm just trying to figure out, so I, I'm just, it's just a question. So with this proposal or agenda item, again, it's just kind of a, or or, sorry, there's music in the background. Is there? I, I understand that especially, especially now, as, as people are coming from, from other places in the world, running away from that pandemic and also just getting away from Bozeman or Gallatin Valley, Gallatin County prices. There's a kind of a strange influx for different reasons of the population. These, these potential two new board members that don't have to own property, is there still, is there still a, I don't mean to be redundant, but is there a weights and measure to at least examine that, that they have fiscal responsibility to the community? Even though they don't own their own property, is there a way to, is there something in place that examines that they do have evaluated measures and, and to just to, to be a part of, of, of major conversations such as these? It's not really a comment, it's more of a question.
Question, yep. Okay, thank you. David, Matthew, are you running a timer? Should I be running a timer?
I forgot, because it's the first time I'm doing this, but I will run a timer. I have one up in the background. That was my fault. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, David, for your question, for your comment slash question. Do we have any other public comment?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Patricia.
Can I say that I was surprised at the city manager and city attorney's response to this as opposed to the city commission? I think the city commission was quite open to just simply moving forward to give up that designation, and I have to say this pretty bluntly. Having been involved. Having been involved in Livingston City Commission affairs for 20 years. Very often a city manager or a staff will try to get someone they want on a board. And then they find minuscule things like freeholder and other things that keep someone off that they may or may not want. And it's a, it's a practice that takes place. It's not usually, you know, discussed because in company you don't discuss things like this. But it nevertheless exists in Livingston and it exists pretty much in spades. And when it comes to board appointments. So I am really concerned that the city manager and the city attorney took such a strong stand on this when. The commission and the, and the planning board and others were not as, as interested in that. So I just, that's my comment. I, I think we need to. You know, this is a, an organization that needs to respond to the public. And, and it is so appreciated that this board is doing such a good job. And, and responding to the public, but I was concerned. That they just were intransigent when it came to discussing this whole freeholder issue. It's, it's, it's an anachronism. It's way outdated. It should have been dealt with. By the city commission the evening that all of this occurred, far as I'm concerned. So it's time to, to, to just relinquish. This kind of property owning. Righteous process this nation has hopefully overcoming. Thanks.
Thank you, Patricia. Okay, is there any other public comment? Last call, second call for public comment.
Jesse, we have a raised hand from Leslie Feigl.
Oh, Leslie, thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, just getting everything turned back on and, and whatnot. So, um. I also, because I'm. One, six, six, Dr. Leslie Feigl. So, um. Because I'm on my cellphone here, I'm not able to pull up the agenda, but I do have on my phone that there was a comment that was made. It's on the homepage of the city's website. Changes not made between December, January, why we must address areas outside the city limits. We're at this point, right? This is where I can comment on this.
No, not yet, Leslie. That's part of the agenda. We're talking about the freeholder. Requirement at this point.
Okay, um, so my comment on that is that, again. I, I absolutely agree with what we are trying to turn over. I mean, myself. I run the Chamber of Commerce and I live in the county and I cannot. I have these, there, there are boards that I cannot be on and because that I don't own the building at the chamber. And because I live in the county, you, you know, it's been extremely confusing to me over the years that how the county. Can, that the city folks can vote on county issues, but it's not in reverse and we can't hold positions on the board. Even if we have a job that's in the city limits. Say as an ownership or a CEO position and that we represent the community. So I again, agree with. With what is trying to be achieved that we try to get that reversed. That's my comment on that.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, any other public comment? On the freeholder requirement? One more time for public comment? Okay, last call for public comment. Seeing none, we're going to move on. Public comment is closed. Okay, let's open it up to board discussion. Does anybody have any comments I'd like to make about the memo or about what we've heard?
Hey, this is Brian. If I could make a quick comment. I think the memo is really good. I think you. Captured the conversation that the board had in the last meeting as far as, you know, what our concerns were. And so. I think it's, I think it's really good. One comment that was made. Just prior about people outside the cow, outside the city. Not being allowed to be on boards. I, I disagree with that individual, though I understand people are active in the community. They may own businesses in the community and things like that, but I do still think that. If you want to be involved with city. City workings, then you should live within the city. Again, whether that be renter or, or an owner, that's just my personal beliefs, but I think the memo is written is very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other? Boards, just got any other comment from the board?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, thanks, Taya. I was just gonna say. Chair Wilcox, in response to the question about weights and measures for who gets to be on boards and commissions. Matthew might have more specifics, but essentially for every different working group and board. And commission in the city of Livingston, there are different requirements and there are different. Groups that do that appointing. For example. Technically, I think the, and Matthew will know, I think it maybe is the chair of the commission. Who can make the planning board appointments, but typically the way we run it in Livingston is we get recommendations from each board. From the board itself. For which applicants and then that goes to the commission and then the commission has a final say. Now there's other specific examples where the city manager gets to make the appointment and a lot of these are spelled out in Montana code. And it's available. If you have questions, I would ask department heads or the city manager. If you have a specific board, you're interested in knowing how the appointments are made.
Thank you, Melissa. I was hoping we were going to be able to address that question. Taya, did you have some, something to add?
I, I, I did. I just wanted to ask. Regarding the memo, if you want. If we're just commenting in general, or if we want to dive into specific points about the memo?
I would say that if you think there needs to be changes to the memo, this would be a great time to discuss that. So that we can hopefully vote on whether to send this memo off to the commission tonight. So, so go ahead. If you have some specifics you want to change or comments about that.
And we're, we're speaking about Matthew's memo regarding.
No, this is the memo regarding the freeholder requirement to the commission.
That just clicked in. Apologies.
Okay, no worries. Okay, anybody else on the board have a, have a comment about the memo about the freeholder requirement being sent to the commission? Okay.
Chair Wilcox?
Yes, Shannon.
I make a motion to forward your memo from the planning board to the city commission.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Was that Melissa?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, let's go through. The vote count. Shannon?
Four.
Brian?
Four.
Stacy?
Or.
Melissa?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
Taya?
Four.
And Jesse is also four. Great. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, I want to peek at the agenda here and see what's next. Okay, we're moving on to new business and here we will start with the growth policy review of the maps. Matthew, would you like to give any sort of introduction to exhibit 3.4, the future growth map?
I would. Um, I'm gonna, instead of talking at each agenda, I'm just going to cover each, everything that was covered in the memo, which sort of covers them all. As quickly as I can here. There are a lot of new people, so I'm just going to run through the background again and sort of how we got to this point. So at the first meeting in January, which is on the sixth. We set a schedule on what chapters or sections that the planning board would like to review of the growth policy. At that time, it was determined based on public comment and the desires of the planning board to. Discuss the maps and the extraterritorial jurisdiction first, the extraterritorial jurisdiction being appendix A of the growth policy. The sort of process for this is staff has prepared a draft and is providing you that draft. For the public and the planning board to make comments on. Once those comments are made, staff will go back and make the changes that the planning board would like to see and bring it back to you at the next meeting. The plan is to meet every two weeks until the end of April. So now the specifics on what we are discussing today, I will very quickly just run through the list of changes that have been made to. The maps and the ETJ. So for the maps, the future growth areas map, which is exhibit 3.4 and exhibit 2.7 of appendix A. Has been retitled areas facing development pressure. Just to indicate that the growth policy is not encouraging growth in these areas. We've heard that a lot in public comments. Mayor's Landing in Vista View Mobile Home Park have been removed from the. Maps or the areas facing development pressure. One is obviously a park and the other one is already developed. And is it either in the process of becoming occupant owned or has already done so and is not slated for redevelopment. There were just in the December updates, so the first set of updates you all got. There was, there were updates to exhibit 11.1, which Jim has already mentioned. Expansion of the central business district land use type. And the update of the area to the south of Park Street adjacent to downtown to be shown as high density residential. I will talk a little bit more about the distinction between zoning and the land use map. Shortly, because it seems to be causing a lot of confusion and I think that needs to be cleared up. The Yellowstone Preserve parcel, which is the parcel to the. North of the railroad tracks at the far east end of town, which is currently undeveloped. Has been changed to low density residential to show the significant development constraints on that parcel. And the detailed future land use map, which is exhibit 11.2, has been updated to match the. 11.1 in the December draft you got, they weren't consistent. The detail still had the old land use designations on it. For the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the land use category of low density residential has been changed to agriculture and low density residential. There was some public comment asking why this change has been made. Basically, we heard a lot of public comments saying we want to protect agriculture in the extraterritorial jurisdiction and so. By changing the future land use to agricultural and very low density residential, we want to indicate that. That area is to be used for agriculture moving into the future. The two large areas of undeveloped land west of Green Acres and Discovery Vista, so north of town. Were shown as medium density residential. On the future or the extraterritorial future land use map. Those have been changed to agricultural, very low density, again, based on public comment, encouraging infill and not to encourage. Additional growth of residential development beyond the city limits.
Absolutely.
The words within planned future growth areas and have been removed from strategy 3.1.2 of the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Again, in response to public comments. As there are no future growth areas shown in the growth policy at this time. The strategy now reads encourage new development in areas that are already zoned or subdivided urban densities in the planning area. Strategies 3.1.8 and 3.1.9 were added in the December update, so you all should have seen those already. And strategy 3.1.10 require annexation prior to subdivision of any parcel in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Was added in response to public comment, again, not wanting to see. Residential development, especially large lot residential development to be allowed in the county area. Again, we'll talk about this more. When we talk about the land use section of the growth policy, much of the public comment has been focusing on. Making sure that everything that is subdivided is within the city limits at urban densities with city services. The change that was not made. Is the Friends of Park County and others have made comments that we delete. The future land use map out of the extraterritorial jurisdiction. I do not think this is a beneficial thing for us to do at this time. The first criteria, if we are to zone that area, which would be the regulatory controls that we would have over that area is. Whether or not that zoning is consistent with the growth policy. A future land use map is one of the most clear and most direct ways we can show. What generally the zoning we would like to see in that area is. So by removing it, we, we almost undercut our ability to regulate that area. And it doesn't, there's been, I think, a little bit of confusion by not showing that area. It doesn't mean no growth in that area. It just means we are. Abdicating our responsibility or our ability, I should say, to plan that area. And there's been a lot of confusion and this wasn't included in the memo. This is based on. Public comment that we've gotten today and in the last few days, there seems to be a lot of confusion between. The future land use map and zoning and the differences therein. The future land use map is not a zoning map. It doesn't interact with current zoning in any way. It's basically laying out what we would like to see the future of land use to be in the area. It doesn't regulate anything. It's not going to set out specifics for things like lot sizes, setbacks, uses, that's all done through a zoning process. What the future land use map does is tell us. What the general uses and densities we want to see in the area. So if we do decide to move forward with a zoning process. We have a baseline for that. We do have to go through that zoning process if we do want to zone anywhere in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. And, and that will be a robust public process and you'll dive down into specifics, things again, like lot size or setbacks or uses. So we've had a few questions asking for, for very specific things in that extraterritorial jurisdiction and it's not really something that a future land use map does. And that sort of goes to Jim's question as well with the. Expansion of the central business district land use in the future land use map, which is even more confusing because we have that as a zoning designation. It's just showing that the proposed future land use in that area is central business district. It does not mean that the minute that this growth policy is adopted or if it does get adopted. That the whole area will be rezoned to be central business district. It's a plan for the future essentially. The other thing that's, I caused a little bit of confusion, currently the way the city planning board is set up. The city does not have any regulatory jurisdiction over the extraterritorial jurisdiction at this time. We would need to set up a city county planning board to do so. The last thing I think that has, we've gotten a couple of public comments on is there's a large area shown as manufacturing. To the far east end of town. It's where the existing, I think there's three or so existing gravel pits on that, in that area, and that's why it's shown as that. Is, is causing some confusion. So it may be something the planning board wants to look at relabeling. Other than that, that's basically my whole memo and my whole spiel. So I'm happy to answer any questions or we can move into public comment.
Thank you very much. Super helpful. Okay, let's go to board questions first, please. Does the board have questions?
This is Brian. I've, I have a quick question, Matthew. One thing that I saw was a new, relatively new designation. I haven't seen used before. Called community, community commercial. And I kind of looked that up a little bit online. Can you give kind of just a? Quick, broad explanation of how you envision what that limitation is in that, in that zone?
So all of the designation should be laid out in the growth policy. I'm not sure if you were given those because they're actually in one of the sections we're not talking about. I'm not sure if they're laid out in the appendix A. I'm actually trying to scroll through right now to see those.
Okay, I might have just missed it.
But they are included in the growth policy and a description of what all of those mean is included. I think it's probably in chapter three of the growth policy.
Okay, thanks.
Three is the land use. Chapter, which will address not next meeting, but the meeting after. I'm sorry, Taya, did you have something? Oh, you're on mute, Taya.
I have a couple of questions. Matthew, thank you for putting the memo together and providing that rationale. What, what, what was the thinking behind just putting ag and low density residential together? It feels a bit like a. Uber catchall.
Sure. You know, agricultural and low density residential uses often go together. You have. You know, agricultural and low density residential uses often go together. You have a farmstead essentially. And there are existing low density uses in the area. So I think the thinking was basically that to indicate that we want to maintain the existing uses in the area, being agricultural and and low density residential is, is what they are. It's tough to separate those two, but if it's something the planning board would like us to look at, it's certainly something we can do. And I think a discussion, based on public comment, a discussion on those categories is certainly warranted during this meeting.
Wait, because specifically with low density residential, what would be the parameters around that?
So again, those are included in chapter three, I believe. I believe low density residential was residential densities averaging or being from anywhere from zero to two units per acre.
And then my second question had to do with, with that manufacturing area in the ETJ. I noticed in the actual chapter, it says a large manufacturing area slated for the south and southwest of the I-90, 89 interchange north. But it didn't provide, I know that area is larger than the existing gravel pits that are there. So I'm wondering, what is this slating?
Let me quickly pull my map up here. I don't think that the area shown on the map is particularly larger. It does follow parcel lines than existing what I'm going to call industrial rural industrial uses. It might be slightly larger. And I think that's referring to, and I honestly can't tell you the intent behind that exact statement. To the fact that we've heard quite a bit of questioning on development around the off ramp, specifically transit oriented, or I should say, transportation oriented, commercial and industrial development.
Matthew, on, in that same, on that same question, was there a reference for a gravel pit south on South 89? Or was it just referencing the gravel pit at the intersection of I-90 and 89 North?
The only manufacturing zone on the future land use map is to the east there. I don't think there was a reference anywhere else. But if you'd have to let me know where exactly you're talking about, so I could look it up.
Well, it was in the terminology and I just, it didn't, it wasn't clear. And so it implied that there is one, that there were two locations, but only one was on the map.
And I'm not quite sure what terminology you are referring to.
What's the number of the map that showed the manufacturing?
Two, two point. I think it's two point.
Two point what?
Point eight.
So, so in that location, that is the, that is not at the junction of, of Highway 89 North. That's, that's out where the county shops are, isn't it?
It's much further east than the county or, I'm thinking of the city shops. Yes, it is out there where it's basically at the I-90 off ramp. The extraterritorial jurisdiction, you can't quite see it on this map. It clips kind of through the very top right corner. The extraterritorial jurisdiction does not reach 89. So that area has not been included.
Is, Matthew, is there, I know you said it, it covers what, what's currently existing, but it would, it would then if, and I know it doesn't establish zoning, but it sets a precedent when we go forward with zoning. It seems that there would then be greater pressure on that area because it would be zoned for industrial.
Potentially, yes. And it's definitely something to discuss as well. I know a lot of the public comments have addressed that, that specific portion and it's, it's definitely a discussion to have with the planning board.
I, I have another question. I wondered if there was a possibility of to, for clarity purposes to make, I know when we have the original survey of the ETJ areas that they're, they were broken into quadrants. And it seems to me that the references of north or northeast, or sometimes north is used, but not necessarily northwest or northeast. If there would be a map created that would indicate what sections are, you know, what is the dividing line between them and taking the ETG, ETGA, huh? You know, the original lines and saying this is considered to be in the northwest or just so that it's clear. And then you wouldn't have generalities made developments will only be in, would, would likely be in X.
Any changes to the map that you all would like to see, we can probably accommodate, but that's definitely a discussion that the whole planning board will need to have and vote on to for me to make those changes.
And is that going to be later after public discussion or is it now?
We'll give the public a chance to comment and then we'll have that planning board discussion.
And I'll hold my other comments until later.
Chair Wilcox?
Yes.
I just want to ask a clarifying question. So I don't, Matthew gave his, he shared his memo. This is a lot of information and I do have a lot of follow-up questions. So I'm just wondering how you want to proceed to make sure that we're using our time efficiently. Like, do you want to go, or maybe Matthew has some ideas on how he wants to go through the document?
Yeah, I was almost thinking we should just start with the first, the future growth map and start there because my thought, my thought on how we should proceed on this is we should take a look at that particular map, you know, and then decide whether we want to accept the city's changes or either do we want to make changes or are there changes that are missing that we have have gotten from public comment that we don't think have been addressed? So that was my thought is that we should maybe just start with that future growth map first. Decide if we want to accept that or change it. Vote and then move on to the next. Does that make sense?
It does. And then there's other maps that were included that I believe there's other information besides just maps for us to talk about too. So I just want to make sure that because there's other maps of interest besides the one that are listed specifically on the agenda. Does that make sense?
It does. Yep. Should we, should we start with the future growth map first?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we had time for everything and we didn't. So thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So that's, thanks for that, Claire. Thanks for that question, Melissa. I know we've just kind of talked generally just now about, about all of, several of the maps. Are we comfortable with looking at exhibit 3.4, the future growth map? And commenting on whether we would like to accept the map with the city's changes or do we feel like there are more changes that need to be made? That's exhibit 3.4, the future growth map.
I have a question.
Go for it.
Okay.
Sorry.
The only, my only question on the future growth map was I wondered if it needed to have the ET, EJ, can never say that, extra, your additional areas facing development pressure, if there shouldn't be an additional map created that, that meshes that with a recent annexation map.
So creating another map?
Mm-hmm. So that it, it overlays what, so that you get a full picture of how it all is kind of together.
Okay, Madam Chair, if I may quickly.
Go ahead.
If we are going to have a board discussion on the maps, I would ask that we take public comment first.
Okay, then let's move to public comment.
And we do have, the first raised hand I saw was Reader, Rita, and I'm hoping I can get this last name right, Royzer or Royzier?
Rita, would you state your full name and your address, please? And I see you, but you're muted.
Yeah, okay, there we go. Rita Rojer, 39, Billman Lane, Livingston. So I'm in the Donut area and I just was asking if you could put that map on, on screen so we could be looking at it while we're discussing it. I, my comment that had come in earlier was that in talking to neighbors, I've been here since 2003 and in talking to neighbors, I have heard from many of them that when the wine glass was added to, that subdivision was added, the agreement was that there, there would be a connection to the exit 330 on I-90 from, straight from the wine glass, instead of it coming down Love Lane or Billman Lane by Albert Sincere and coming through town before it gets on the interstate. And I didn't, I think that might be included in your growth plan and I'd just like to see that.
Okay, thank you, Rita. Looks like. Patricia, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, could you put that map up? Is that possible, first of all? The map you're talking about?
I can't do the map and the timer at the same time.
Okay, I want to make a comment on, I think I have the right map in which what is basically the Voyage Ranch is listed as mixed use. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Patricia, when you, when you finish your comment, we'll pull up the map and then we can look at the Voyage property. How's that feel?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. What I, what did you say? I'm sorry, Jessica.
Well, that's okay. As soon as you finish public, we're going to go through public comment and then we'll pull, pull up the map.
I, I'm making comment on what is basically the Voyage Ranch.
Okay.
It's listed as mixed use, which I, I'm just shocked at frankly. Now I was on this, there's two things, MDT simply has destroyed Montana towns, town after town, Great Falls, Columbus, you name it. Because it, and I was on the city commission when we did the Yellowstone Preserve, which was involved commercial zoning and everything else. And I'm so grateful that that, those designations now have been taken off. So I'm grateful about that. But the same process right now is applying to this, what is basically Voyage Ranch in that whole area. We are in a privileged position. This growth policy has said, take a look at our environment. That is watershed area that should be conservation easement. Marie Voyage has said, you know, over my dead body, will you develop my ranch? And yet we, we have the audacity to put mixed use as a, when we want infill development and, and to take that Voyage Ranch and turn it into mixed use is, is a travesty to me. It should be conservation easement. It should take into consideration the watershed. It should take into consideration the 6,000 year old breeding ground for a pronghorn. It, it should not be mixed use. There's nobody who was that is mixed use except for Bozeman developers. And, and one of the developers who is talking about this, we were in conversation, he said, his idea of a terrific development was four corners. I said, are you kidding me? Four corners? And, and they really, they love four corners, you know? No, that is a natural space. If you go to Jackson Hole, Wyoming, the Smith Ranch was turned over as an elk refuge. We are on the border of Yellowstone National Park. We should be taking into consideration our relationship with the rest of the land and the environment should be our primary consideration. Gratefully, finally, after I fought for nine months, this single descending vote against Yellowstone Preserve development, and finally, somebody had some insight that I was saying at the time that that was absolutely a bad idea to intensely develop that Yellowstone Preserve. And I feel that way that strongly about the Voyage Ranch, please. That needs to be, needs to be agricultural.
Okay, thank you very much, Patricia. You're out of time, but thank you.
Get that out. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, hold on. Let me check the chat. Wendy Weaver, I believe, had a comment.
Thanks, Jessica.
Sure thing. Name and address, please, Wendy.
Um, I guess what I would like to comment, I, I looked at that map. I've been looking at that map for a while and it just struck me this week.
Real quick, Wendy, name and address, if you don't mind for the minutes.
Wendy Weaver, 203 South I Street.
Thank you.
Sorry, we forget that. So I guess my question is, it, it just struck me this week that that low density residential is a very light tan color and it didn't even resonate that that was I guess designated for future growth. And I guess that really concerns me because of what I know and understand on smart growth principles and how sprawl affects communities. And I guess I, I just have a concern. It's almost like it's hidden and it really doesn't stand out of what that potential to grow outside of our city limits could be and what the impacts of that sprawl will be without planning for infrastructure, for roads, for services, for connectivity, walkability, all the things that smart growth principles emphasize. And I just, I just hope that the planning board understands what the tax in implications of that sprawl are on a community because they break communities and growth never pays for itself. And so without focusing the density in the downtown areas where there's already existing infrastructure could be extremely detrimental on our community, especially with our property tax system that we have. So anyway, I just think that color should be bright red, like that should be a sign that, hey, we could grow in these areas and many of them I would argue are not good areas to grow based on the topography, proximity to floodplain and other areas, our open space and view sheds. So I just want to reiterate how important it is to think about how we're going to grow outside our city limits and to really focus on the downtown area and where we already have existing services. So thank you for letting me comment. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Wendy. Um, I think I saw Sarah Stans. Would you like to comment or were you just providing a screenshot?
I was just giving a screenshot for the map for people who can't access it.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan? Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Shannon. Are, are we keeping public comments specific to exhibit 3.4? Are we opening it up to the rest of the maps? I thought, I, it was my understanding that we confirmed that we were focusing on 3.4. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that.
I think we were to, Shannon, I'm sorry. And it's, it's hard to have a timer up and then not have a map up. I wonder if it would be easier if, if we put the map up and I can hold the timer. Thank you, Shannon. I, I, I'm glad you said something. I'll start the timer for public comment. If you give me two seconds to get there. So I think that's the best way that we're going to get through this if we really try and stick to one, because we could jump all over the place with these maps. So let's look at 3.4, future growth map. We've had some board discussion. We're opening up to public comment on this map. And Jonathan, I think you were next. And Jonathan, I think you were next in there. Did you have a, a comment?
Yes, Jonathan Hittinger, 519 West Park Street. I wanted to thank Matthew for addressing most of my questions. And I like the new name of this map, and, and I like the changes on the other maps that are, that show the areas in this map are not necessarily slated for development. However, I was just gonna comment that I think that we could potentially just delete this map, because I think that it's, what does an area facing development pressure mean? Why does it matter? And if we're looking at future land use map like in the other exhibits, Exhibit 11.1, Exhibit 2.8, and extraterritorial jurisdiction plan, I just think that those are the maps that matter. So I don't see that there's necessarily a need for this map, but thank you very much.
Thanks, Jonathan. Okay, David, I think I saw your hand up again. And don't forget, name and address, please.
Oh, yeah, David Karen, East Montana Street. It's just a real quick question. Is there, I'm sure there's a place, I just haven't found it. Is there a place I can, that, that describes the density breakdowns where it talks, you know, this such-and-such acreage is low-density versus middle and high? Is, is there a place that just describes the density breakdown?
Yes, there is. Is that your comment, David? I'm gonna go through.
Yeah, it was strictly a question, no comment.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Is there anyone else who has comment on this map?
Hey, Jesse, I've got three people with hands up. First of which is Leslie Feigl.
Okay, Leslie. Name and address, please.
166 Miller Drive. And in regards to the 3.4 exhibit, so my comment is this, and it's probably gonna go across the board on all of them, but this map in particular. First of all, I want to say thank you to you all for being here this evening, and Jessica for stepping up, and for our city commissioner, Melissa, for, you know, after a long day, and other boards, you know, taking care of us and, and listening to the community. That means a lot to me, all of you that are on the board. We don't really get heard a lot these days. I'm gonna jump right into this here with my three minutes. So basically, you can put a dress on a pig, but it's still a pig. This map and not you, because you guys didn't make the map. But again, this map, the folks that live in this county area, they're, they, they still don't have the knowledge. And I'm looking specifically that if you go there between 89 and Highway 10, that big purple area there, I spoke to a business owner out there, one of our largest business owners, who is also a, he's emergency services provider for our entire community and county, did not even know about these meetings, didn't know about the city growth policy, didn't know about the planning and development in his area. And that is, again, my specific comment on this is that we see the bigger picture, because we have jobs in the community, but there are so many folks that if you live in the county, you don't look at the community in the city for what's going on, because you live in the county. And if there is no communication between the county and the city, community members, if there's no notification that the city's doing this, and oh, by the way, it could affect you when you live in this area of the county, it's simply not fair. If you are a landowner and you are being affected by this, for heck's sake, we should at least get them a letter in the mailbox. They should be sent an email or a phone call. Holy cow. It, it just, it's not right. I mean, they're taxpayers. They need to be knowing that there is a potential growth map that could be affecting them, and that development pressures down there on South 89, I know the landowner that owns half of that land, and there's no development pressures, because he has no, no future idea of going anywhere within the city limits. So again, I really question this map. And I think that a lot of folks just simply need to know that under MCA Title VII, Chapter 2, Part 48, we do have recourse, and I am, being that I am a county rep, landowner, I, I definitely will be using that as the backup, but I really would hate to. I think that it's more, you know, wonderful for us to be able to communicate all of our issues this way, and I appreciate, again, you guys doing what you can.
Okay, Leslie. Sorry, time's up, Leslie. I was trying to hold my phone up so you could see, but it didn't work. Okay, thank you for your comment, Leslie. Who's next, Matthew?
Next, we have Jennifer Magic.
Okay. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Jessie. Thanks, planning board members. My name is Jennifer Magic. I live at 624 South Third in Bozeman. And this map, I find troubling for a couple of reasons. And I agree with Matthew that to have a future land use map is important. So you kind of know where, you know, the city may grow beyond its city limits and beyond zoning. But this map isn't really a future land use map. I think this map has been designed potentially by landowners who are interested in developing instead of the community driving where development should grow. I really think that this map, I agree with the previous comment from Jonathan, that this map really doesn't have any place in your growth policy. Because if you think about it, land ownership can change in these areas, so that quote, "development pressure" can change. And it doesn't, these areas don't necessarily comport with your future land use map. So I, I guess I'm just questioning why this is here. I see, you know, that it's kind of a residual from maps of prior iterations of this draft growth policy, but I really don't feel that it has a place, and I would recommend striking it from the document. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
The last hand I have here is Jody Litchfield.
Hi. Your name and your address, please.
Yeah, Jody Litchfield, 303 Fleishman Creek Road. Um, I guess my comment is, I just hope that in some way, I know it's been challenging, but that the county and the city can work collaboratively. I've looked at the changes made to the map, and while it leaves me with a warm and fuzzy, because the sprawl isn't showing in bright pink up towards where I live, if the county chooses, they can develop it like Meg's Road. Whereas if the city adopts it, it'll be tighter density. It'll be sewage on the city. It'll be water on the city. There won't be individual wells and drain fields, which are highly impactful to the land. So while I don't love the term sprawl, I don't like the ideal of it, but I think it's important to consider the control that the city then has if they're adopting it as, or annexing it into theirs. But again, I think it, it needs to be addressed with the county, because just because the city says we're not gonna develop their, well, the county will. So at least to my understanding. And if I could, were to compare like Northern Lights and Discovery Vista, and the, the high density of development in that area in contrast to Meg's Road, I'd far prefer to see what's going on in the high density of Northern Lights. Again, this is not for my betterment, believe me, but I think that it's important that the city maintains control of as much area as possible, because I feel like the infrastructure will be put in place. And, and secondly, when we talk about infill, I think it's important that we consider our neighbors and the neighborhood. I lived in the city for 20 years, and I have a house in the city, and I work in the city, and what we do as infill affects the neighbor next door. So as we go through this, and I know that's a zoning issue, I think it's really important that we consider the privacy that's being impeded by doing a two-story or a three-story infill development.
Thanks, Jody. You're running out of time.
Okay, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I believe Dale was in there. Dale had a comment.
Thank you, Jessica. Dale Sexton, 23 North Main Street. I'd just like to thank the planning board largely for tackling this very challenging task at hand here. It's admirable what you're trying to achieve here, and, and I just want to express how grateful I am for your effort, frankly.
What's that?
In general, essentially, I'd like to just second the comments from Wendy and, and Jonathan, and, and as well as, as well as Jody. And is a, is a lifelong Livingston resident slash business owner for going on 25 years now. The, the challenge at hand is not easy, right? I know you guys are grappling with a lot, and you only have so many options for dealing with, but and I think you've done a good job at trying to contain sprawl, but anything that we can do to maintain the unique characteristics that, that, that Livingston that we all know and love, so to speak, and, and I know you guys appreciate it well, and as well, and that's why you're, why you're involved in this operation. So thank you for acknowledging that and for your, for your efforts. But anything that we can do to, you know, discourage sprawl and to, and I appreciate Jody's comments on infill. I, I think that that's, that's something that we certainly need to consider, and I know you have as, as well as redevelopment. Those are, those are two powerful tools that we have to, to help contain sprawl and, and to make sure that we, that we ensure the vitality of our, of our downtown, because it's really the, the heart of our, our community, if you will. And there's so many other things to, to consider here, but, you know, Livingston is a, is a very unique and special community, as we, as we all know and appreciate, and, and as a business owner, you know, and you can appreciate that there's people out there in our community who would love to have a Walmart here, but that's, you know, we just become like everybody else when we invite those big box stores to, to Livingston. We, we don't differentiate ourselves in, in any manner, as soon as we, as soon as we open ourselves up to those, to, to that exploitation, if you will. So again, you know, I, I know I'm rambling here, but just thank you for your efforts and control sprawl as best we can, and emphasize redevelopment in, in infill as best we can within, within our existing footprint.
Thanks, Dale.
I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I did see Ashia Mills. Would you like to make a comment, Ashia?
Self unmuted there. Can you hear me?
Yes. Name and address, please.
Ashia Mills, and currently at 215 Stone Street, but we are transitioning to Livingston, so 720 North. Primary residence.
Somebody's gonna mute. I can't hear.
Excuse me, did you, did somebody mute their? Their microphones, please. There's a lot of background noise. The ability to mute? Matthew, the background noise, and just let Ashia speak. I'm sorry, Ashia.
That's okay.
Is it Cheryl?
Yeah. Okay, let's, go ahead, Ashia, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. I'm not sure if I was heard earlier. Ashia Mills, and currently in Gardner, transitioning to a primary residence in Livingston, 720 Northeast Street. And I own a long-term rental close to downtown. I was pretty alarmed at the original future land use map, and I'm just gonna read my comments. So I'm really grateful for the revised version. But I definitely want to ask the board to prioritize growth within the current city limits. A lot of us come from places dominated by sprawl, and we know it decays community. It increases the need to drive. It alienates kids. It damages open space, agricultural use, view sheds, riparian areas, wildlife habitat. In short, sprawl directly attacks our most treasured common values here in southwest Montana. I know we all have a deep appreciation for recreation opportunities, view sheds, open space, our Big Sky, clean and accessible water, most presently in the Yellowstone River, but critical tributary streams as well. I'm particularly concerned with any moves that exacerbate what's already a very rapidly changing climate. As more people come to understand the cause and effects of our carbon footprint, residents in the future would be horrified to look back on us making these decisions were we not to stand strong on simple measures like mitigating sprawl in all ways and with what tools we have. And so I, I definitely appreciate your focus on growth within existing boundaries. It takes advantage of existing infrastructure for a much more fiscally responsible path forward. It maintains growth near essentials like schools, banks, grocery stores. This keeps these places accessible for all demographics, including bikers, walkers, families, single moms, kids, our elders. It definitely encourages a more vibrant downtown, which can favor local businesses over the hellacious American strip mall landscape that a couple of others have referred to. And we all must be doing everything to make our community more resilient, and that means more walkable and bikeable access to the essentials, not laying more expensive and maintenance-intensive infrastructure in areas we don't want to see crawling with sprawl, and it means maintaining and protecting our most values. Thank you for the chance to comment.
Thanks, Ashia. Could I ask one more time for the public to please put their microphones on mute? Patricia and Cheryl, you're both, we can hear you.
Jessica?
Cece, go ahead, yep.
Could Ashia email her comments in if she's got a written one? Is that possible?
Oops, Ashia, you're muted, but thank you. If you wouldn't mind sending them into the planning board.
I opened my video and not my, not my sound. Yes, I will do that right away. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Jesse, we've had Kenneth Cochran with his hand up for a while here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Cochran, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Ken Cochran, a co-founder of Friends of Park County. My address is 60 Majestic Ridge Trail, Livingston. Our growth policy recommendations for you tonight can be boiled down to one very simple idea. The future growth and development of Livingston should take place inside the city limits and not in the form of a ring of residential, commercial, and industrial sprawl outside of it in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Being a retired attorney, I am comfortable stating nothing in the Montana Growth Policy statutes supports the proposition that the planning board is required to allow continuation of rural residential development or the expansion of commercial development, or a massive expansion of industrial uses in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. In fact, the Montana Planning Statutes expressly gives the planning board the discretion to propose policy and implementing measures of its own choosing for the ETJ. to propose policy and implementing measures of its own choosing for the ETJ, including the compact growth and anti-sprawl policies and zonings Friends of Park County, and we believe you support. First, there's no jurisdiction justification for the future land use map to identify huge swaths of land in the ETJ for half acre, one acre, or any acre-sized residential development because there's already more than enough land for residential development inside the city limits. Our consultants did a rough and conservative estimate of land needed for a 50% increase in the city's population, 408 acres. There are 889 developable acres of vacant land inside the city limits. That is more than enough for not only residential, but also commercial, civic, and industrial uses. Friends of Park County calling the planning board to revise the future land use map to change the designation of five square miles of land outside the city limit for manufacturing back to its prior designation. The city of Livingston is only 5.7 square miles. Why does it make sense to have five square miles of land designated for manufacturing? The Ford Motor Company's largest industrial site in the United States is only one-eighth that size, but 6,000 people work there. For members of the public who are listening tonight who would like to see our 11-page written statement, log onto friendsofparkcounty.org and click "Join Our Mailing List" and we will send it to you. Thank you for your time, attention, and service, and I know Gene Kefler would like to make a statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. You made it just at three minutes. Perfect. Okay, um, and please remember we're commenting on this, uh, the, this map that you're looking at here, the, the future growth map that has been renamed. Uh, so if you have comments on the ETJ or, or the future land use map, we're going to get to that. We're just focusing on this map now. Okay, Gene, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I am Gene Kefler. I'm a co-founder of Friends of Park County. I live at 1010 Swinley Road, Livingston. Um, we really applaud the changes that the staff has appro, has proposed to the future growth areas map. They go a long way to clarify that these are not areas planned for future city expansion. As a first order of business in my testimony, I want to reiterate that our Friends organization supports future city and county zoning of the ETJ. In fact, the sooner the better. We understand that the city's future zoning work requires the adoption of a growth policy, which has first been, been recommended by your board, and that future city and zoning considerations take into account the recommendations regarding the ETJ. In other words, we understand you should include a map. In our earlier testify, testimony, I want to be certain to clarify that we recommended that the future use map be deleted because we disagreed with the content that was set forth in the Burton draft. Now, our concerns regarding the content of the map have been largely and satisfactorily addressed in the staff memo. So we support including a map in the growth policy provided that it identifies areas and types of future development as, and is consistent with the major policy themes recommended in the newly modified policy. Now, before closing our comments about the future land use map, we need to raise the concern that the map and related narrative appears to authorize a continued pattern of residential development around the city under the new pairing of the word agriculture with the very low-density residential already mentioned by Ms. Cromley and Ms. Graybough and I believe, um, another member of your board. So, the draft growth policy defines very low-density residential use as the development of a large lot, single-family dwelling, and ancillary structure with a density range from zero to two dwelling units per acre. Now, we know you don't do the zoning, but if this is the definition the city later used to zone, the ETJ agriculture will not be protected and encouraged. Instead, it will be carved into one-half acre, one acre, or even 40-acre lots with houses on each of them. So in our view, land is either agricultural or very low-density residential. And we urge the language of your eventual recommended growth policy to be consistent with that.
Thank you, Gene. You've hit your three minutes.
Thank you.
Is there any, oh, Sarah Stans, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Uh, Sarah Stans, 217 Southeast Street. Um, I think, you know, in, in principle, I understand and see the value for forcing ourselves to look into the future, you know, making a plan for what might be inevitable growth. And I do understand that we have to have some sort of baseline zoning requirements or an idea. However, I think when I look at this map in isolation, I have an ease and a discomfort, I think, for what is lacking in the narrative and what it means before we get to this map. What I mean is that, you know, I wonder like where is the map that shows and demonstrates the development possibilities of the infill and redevelopment that everyone keeps talking about? I think that because this map and lacking other information and other direction of growth that this one just screams really loudly. So, you know, where are our opportunities within the city and areas that can incentivize developers to practice infill development, mixed use, where are the pockets in our city that are within a mile or less of our service centers, our economic hubs, and recreational opportunities? I think if they were together and we were able to prioritize infill and redevelopment that everybody wanted, then everyone would be so upset to have this, this other map. And then, you know, what are the steps that we still have to fulfill to get to this scenario, this map that we're looking at now in 3.4? What is the multitude of things that we can engage in maximizing the other opportunities that we're on about? You know, that the community is pushing so hard for. So, for an advocate as a bicyclist and wanting to improve the walkability of our cities, this is a really hard map to absorb. Even with our current boundaries within our city limits there in Star Edition, some of those areas are four miles away from basic services, schools, or more, town and country, et cetera. And anything beyond that is even more impossible, um, to create a more walkable and bikeable city. You know, and I really want to see, and I really push for a city that incentivizes that non-motorized transportation, getting us out of our cars and making us great, healthy decisions. I know a lot of us on this board and you guys are working really hard for that and you know, you know where I sit on that. So I think, I think, I think what's lacking is the narrative behind it, what we first support in growth. To even consider something like this, it seems so far-fetched. And, you know, what are the strategies that we can really employ before we have to consider something like this? Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, Matthew, do you see anybody else's hands up?
I don't.
I do not. I do not see anyone. Oh, yes. Oh, John Heike. Yes, John, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't know how, I don't know how to raise my hand in any way but that.
Perfect.
First, I would like to, I would like to thank everyone that I've had the opportunity to hear the very thoughtful comments. My name is John Heike. I live at 124 Morgan Trail, Livingston in the Valley. I'm Chair of the Park County Planning Board. Dale particularly stating what he had to say. Uh, others, very importantly, and of course, our, our representative, Tia, that does an outstanding job. I think the most meaningful thing that I heard from folks tonight was the need to set up a city-county planning board or planning board opportunity. To think about this holistically, to think about it as a county-city combine, to be respectful of one another, but see it as an entire whole rather than two separate entities that are operating simultaneously, but not necessarily synchronously. So I look forward to an opportunity to do that. Thank you very much, Jesse.
Thank you, John.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Gene.
This is Gene Kefler. At, um, the risk of extending your public comment, uh, would you permit me a half a minute to finish my previous testimony?
You know what, Gene, I'm really sorry, but we're, we're trying to stick to the rules where it's three minutes and only one comment per agenda item. But honestly, Gene, we're only on the first agenda item, so there will probably be more time for you to comment after the next.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going with Ms. Stans to repeat comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment, if any other new public comment? None in the chat? Anybody see anybody's hands up? Anybody want to shout out? One more time for public comment?
Um, this is just a shout out. This is Daniella at 705 Lock Haven Drive. I just want to echo everybody's comments about not having the sporadic likes outgrowth, um, and really focusing on the core of the community. Um, and just basically shouting out to echo those other comments and saying thank you so much for listening to everyone and to, um, really make sure that we, um, harvest our community in a special way that it is to bring others out and about with walking distance and biking and, and all that. Thank you, mainly is this a thank you?
Thanks, Daniella. And Stacy, it's, it's Daniella Love, hers her last name. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close public comment, and I'm going to note the time. It is 7:18. Um, we went over our 90-minute, 90 minutes, but I suggest we take five minutes before the board gets into discussion. Does that sound good? Yeah, okay, let's set the clock. It is, uh, 7:17 by my watch. We'll see you back here at 7:22 and we'll resume. Okay, last five minutes. Welcome back. Um, okay, so after public comment, let's open it up to board discussion. Um, I've heard previous public comment, I want to just kind of circle back for a minute and, uh, think about a couple of things that the board has mentioned. Stacy, you had made a comment about the annexation map and whether we might want an overlay on the future growth map. So that's something that was mentioned earlier that maybe we want to circle back on. Um, the other thing I think that would be important for us to, to get some clarification on, uh, because the other thing we heard in public comment was to eliminate the map altogether. Um, and I know that has come up in the past and we've seen lots of public comment on that. And, um, you know, I, it's my understanding that, uh, with the purple areas in the map, that when a subdivision is making a request, uh, to, uh, to, to come into the area, uh, there's a certain sort of checklist that they have to hit, um, that, uh, the planning, uh, the planning department would go through and, and the planning board would be, uh, looking at the growth policy for direction on the subdivision requests. And so if, if and when Matthew comes back, hopefully he's coming. Here he is. Okay. Uh, it's so easy to turn your, your camera off, isn't it? Anyway, I, I wonder if you could just reiterate, and, and maybe you did this with the memo, what the significance is of having this map included and, and why? And why and how the planning department uses this map when developers or individuals interested in developing in that area? How you use that?
Sure. So when this was called a future growth map, which it is no longer has that title, anytime a subdivision comes in, there's a set of criteria that are laid out in state statute that the subdivision is evaluated against. And it wouldn't actually be the planning department evaluating it. We would obviously write the staff report and lay out those criteria and our opinion on whether it meets those criteria, but in the end, it's up to planning board and city commission to determine whether they meet those criteria for subdivision approval. One of those criteria is that it's consistent with the growth policy. So when it's, when it was titled future growth map, if it were in, if the proposed subdivision were in one of those areas, it would have basically checked that box that it was at least consistent with that part of the growth policy. Based on the way that the growth policy has been updated and this map has been updated, because it's not showing areas where the city is desiring to go grow or where the city thinks we should grow, it doesn't do that anymore. Basically, at this point, this map would just be a reference saying, here's where, here's where the city's heard there's pressure to develop and to potentially, when we do things like infrastructure improvements, or we start looking at more finer detailed plans, we would use this map to to guide those a little bit. But because it's not a future growth map anymore, it applies much less to subdivision applications.
Can I ask a follow up question with that, Jesse?
Absolutely.
So would the map that comes later, 2.8? It's on page 22, but it's like the far back 22 in Appendix A, not the upfront 22. And it's a, so it's a slightly different title, recommended future land use map. But would that fulfill the requirement that you're talking about for future growth map for potential subdivision requests?
So we don't actually have to have any maps. What the maps make it much easier for us and for the public is to, if we're talking about zoning or zoning amendments or subdivision, to look at the map and say, it's either consistent with what's shown on the map, so we wouldn't zone an area that's shown as agricultural and low density residential for something like industrial. If we were going to go to do zoning, because it wouldn't be consistent with the growth policy. And the same goes for subdivision. So if a high density subdivision came in somewhere way out in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, it wouldn't check that box that it's consistent with the growth policy. That being said, state law does not allow us to approve or deny any land use applications based solely on the growth policy. So even if it does not, is not consistent with the growth policy, if it is consistent with all the other requirements of state statute, basically, it still means to get approved. So there is a caveat to that. The future land use map, because of the way that the growth policy is written and because of the new titling for 2.7 is probably more educational and more clear for future planning than the actual areas facing development pressure. I think Shannon would probably have more heartburn over us losing that map 2.7 than I do, just because it's helpful to guide future infrastructure improvements.
Just to be clear, 2.7 is the same, exhibit 2.7 is equal to exhibit 3.4?
Yes, the extradurst, well, yes, extraterritorial areas facing development pressure is 2.7 that I'm referring to. That's out of Appendix A. And 2.8 is the recommended future land use map for the extraterritorial jurisdiction. But yeah, so they do two very different things and they mean two very different things. But with all of the public comment we've heard, basically, not, that was not in support of the city showing specific areas outside of city limits to grow into. This map no longer does that and would no longer be used as a guide for something like subdivision approval. It's just going to be a guide for the public and for us areas we've heard that are looking to develop essentially, or have, we've heard talk of potential developments.
So I'm a bit confused in why the same map can mean two completely different things. I think I understand what you're saying, Matthew. But I think it's kind of misleading. And we need to clear up the wording of it or even further, or clarify it more in the ETJ map. I thought that maybe by putting the two maps together, I don't know if you can see this, where you added them overlaid as far as receiving pressure, then you can see why they would be receiving pressure because they are inside existing city property. And that would be why you would be seeing, and this is the map report 3.3, recent annexation map. Because I think you can see why, when you put them on top together, you can see why there is pressure from, for development. Not that we're advocating development, but just you can understand why there's pressure for development due to their location in some cases.
Stacy, this is Shannon. Madam Chair made a comment.
Are you all set, Stacy?
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make that.
Go ahead, Shannon.
I've just, would, would having the city's boundary on exhibit 3.4 or 2.7 be, would that clear up what you're talking about?
Yes, basically, that's what I'm saying. Put hashtags or something so that, not necessarily a different color, but you know, something didn't signify the difference between the two.
I, I agree 100% with your comment. I, I do think that having the city, the current annex, annexation boundary would be a helpful piece to this map, because I think it does help explain why some of these parcels are identified the way they are. I yield.
And I, Shannon, I had another question on that. For example, I can't ask it because it's on the other, but just how were the boundaries determined on some of those open ended ones, like to the west of Green Acres or to the west of Discovery Vista?
You're asking me why those areas?
How the boundaries were determined? You know, why it just stopped there? Why didn't it just keep going?
That would probably be a Matthew or Burton question based on, I think, I'm pretty sure there were, oh, what am I, what sort I'm trying to think of? There were surveys that were, I think, given out with identifying certain areas. I can tell you my opinion based on the areas surrounding Green Acres. You know, they're all on wells and septic systems and if septic systems start to fail and they're within 500 feet of a city sewer main, more than likely the sanitarian or the state code statute would require them to connect to city services, thus requiring a waiver of annexation and you could systematically expand the city based on septic or well failures, you know, in that area.
Okay.
Chair Wilcox, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you just want to take board comments so we can like move it along and?
Yep.
Okay.
And then we need to, then board comments and then looking for a motion on the map.
Okay. I was comparing the extrajurisdictional areas facing development pressure maps, so 3.4 and 2.7, to exhibit 2.8, which is the recommended future land use map, and they're very similar. There's a lot of similarities. I'm not sure that the extrajurisdictional areas facing development pressure, I don't know if that offers us anything, this map. And we've already been told by the public that this growth policy is too long and too complicated. They've asked us to whittle it down and make it more manageable. So I'm wondering and leaning towards removing the maps that don't offer us new information and are just confusing people. Because I don't think a ton is lost, except for what Shannon just identified, which is potentially an area around Green Acres that would be subject to annexation because of what he already named, which was a septic system issue that's come up before in Livingston. And then I think that some of the property, some patches around the north side that might be, that was fun. Just some smaller patches on the north side and then like one, one other patch over on the north side that's not on 2.8. But um, so I'm leaning towards getting rid of the excessive maps that don't offer us anything different.
Do you want to be specific, Melissa, with exactly which maps you would eliminate?
I would eliminate the extrajurisdictional areas facing development pressure map. So exhibit 3.4 on page 26. And later in the document, it's exhibit 2.7 on page 21. They're identical maps in two different parts. But the map that was identified, that Matthew talked about, the recommended, I think he talked about it 2.8, the recommended future land use map, it covers a lot of those areas plus adds additional information, which is what he was remarking on if a subdivision development came before the city, would want to make sure it was compatible with what, this, how the community wants to grow. And this is the type of map I believe would be used, which is 2.8, which covers a lot of the area that is in the map we're talking about. So I think just to be concise and more clear and have a document that's less confusing, I would take out the things that we don't really need, like these maps that are confusing everyone. That's where I'm leaning right.
Okay. Thank you. So eliminating 3.4, 2.7 and keeping exhibit 2.8?
Yes. Any other, any other board comments or thoughts?
So are we, are we commenting on 2.8 then?
You, you can, yeah.
Um, I have concerns about this map. There's been public comment on it as well as it feels in contradiction to the objective in the, in the chapter on the ETJ specifically, objective 3.1 that says coordinate planning and development of the ETJ with Park County to address future zoning and annexation needs. And I don't think the county, as the public has commented, had that opportunity. So I am reticent to have those specific land use categories on this map.
The Junction Hotel.
Wilcox, can I respond to that?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I would like to hear actually if Matthew can respond, because I think, and this goes way back to my early days as a commissioner, I'm pretty sure that one of the prerequisites for joint planning board is having something in this document, but I want to hear from Matthew to make sure.
For joint planning board, I don't believe so. One of the prerequisites to zone the extraterritorial jurisdiction is to have something in this document. And one of the other requirements for zoning is to have a city county planning board rather than just simply a city planning board as it is now. So before we could even consider zoning this area, we'd have to set up that joint board. And just to go to the county question, we have spoken with county planning about this as well. And it's real, they basically stated that it was consistent with their growth policy.
So that is to say, it's one of our goals to have a joint board? And we can't zone outside of our city limits anyway?
Without a joint board. With a joint board, we are allowed to regulate up to two miles from city boundary, which is basically the area that's shown in the extraterritorial jurisdiction.
And is it also your understanding that that's like one of the next steps after the growth policy is to work towards a joint board? Because I feel like that's a message I've heard before on a commission, but I want to make sure.
That would be up to the city commission to set their priorities. I've also heard that, so I'm assuming that would be on the priority list, but that would be a discussion with the city commission.
Thank you, Matthew.
Matthew, doesn't code indicate that once the ETJ is formed, there would be two individuals from the ETJ that would sit on that, on that city board?
Yeah, that's a requirement of the city county planning board is that two members of the city county planning board must be, must reside within that extraterritorial jurisdiction.
And follow up question. For this policy to go forward, can we, can we have a map that simply designates the ETJ without setting perhaps a precedent about what that future land use would be?
We can. We don't even need to discuss the ETJ if we didn't want to. By not discussing the future land use, you make it significantly more difficult for us to regulate that area. Or the other sort of drawback to that is, you know, state criteria requires that it's consistent with the growth policy and any zoning. If you don't show what the future land use is going to be in that area, it's harder to do that. You can do it with the text of the growth policy. It does leave that zoning process much more open for interpretation and much more open for wide scale debate. And obviously, that's a pros and cons with that on how that area actually is zoned and what the uses are and what the densities are in that area.
I'm just thinking about, for example, that area slated for manufacturing, which I think would need to change because that's an employment sector and not a land use category. But that's an aside. It seems to me that there'd need to be some sort of assessment for environmental impact before that's set aside for industrial, no?
There's no requirement. Obviously, with zoning, we would look at all of that through the zoning process. And certainly through zoning, in act standards that protect the environment, things like river setbacks.
And was there, Jessica, was there any on that manufacturing lot, which seems to be the biggest thing because it's such a huge area? Is that because it's that large because somebody said we're interested in developing that and we want it for manufacturing? Or did a county planning, somebody say this would be good for manufacturing? Just kind of clarifying how that came about.
I can't tell you the exact history behind that. It's before my time. What it appears to be is that there is significant, what I'll call rural industrial or mineral extraction activity in that area, if you want to call it that. And it appears that that's why that area has been shown in the way it has.
It's been worked on already, is what you're saying?
There's, there's existing gravel pits in that area. I believe there's two or three of them and there's also a power company has a telephone pole sort of storage facility in that area as well.
Okay, can I speak to Melissa's questions?
Yep.
I, I think that, that I would still prefer to see, instead of eliminating map 3.4 in the city, and I also think it'd be very helpful if the ETHG, ETJ page numbers had ETJ before them so that you would not get them confused with other city numbers, if we're not going to be continuous, because it's very difficult to move from, from one document set to the other. But I think it's helpful in a planning sense to have a visual to show the annexation and to show where land pressure is at this point in time. Not necessarily that it's going to be developed, but I think it is important to show the pressure. So if I had to eliminate something, I would, I would combine map 3.3 with 3.7. Map three point three with three point four in the city.
And eliminate two point seven then Stacy would be the one that you would.
I gotta go find two point seven.
It's, it's in, it's on twenty one on the ETJ. So that Melissa was suggesting eliminating thirty, three point four and two point seven. And you're suggesting combining three point four and three point three as one map. Which, which means we could, we could continue to eliminate map two point seven. And then we have some discussion still to have on exhibit two point eight, which is the.
Right.
Land use map, which we haven't gotten to.
Right. The only thing I would say is, I would just ask again to clarify with Matthew because I still don't quite follow. The different explanation you gave as to why it's used as a future. Land use map in the county and the ETJ, but it's not used as a future land use map as in the city. Did I misunderstand you?
Yeah, so there's two different maps. There's the map titled extraterritorial areas facing development pressure, which used to be called the future growth map. And then there's a recommended future land use map for both the city and the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Those are two distinct maps that mean two different things.
Alright, but, but two point seven and three point four are the same.
I believe so. It's either three point three or three point four are the same map.
They are, right. Three point three shows annexation. Land and three point four doesn't. So, okay. Okay, then yes, if it's a duplication of those two, then I would be in favor of, I guess, the eliminating of two point seven. In the ETJ. With replacing with the same one that's in the city.
With keeping the one that's in the city, right? That, right, three point four and three point three being combined.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have thoughts on? The conversation?
Hey Jesse, this is Brian. I've got a couple of comments. Two, seven and three, four are the same map. I personally do believe that we need to keep at least one of the two. I think the city did a very good job, a great job actually of. Of changing that to areas facing development pressure versus. The future land use. I think, I think that makes a world of difference. I come from a world where information is power. And I think. And it's important, and I think, I think it's important for the city commission, for the city and the community to see. Where we are, where the city is hearing about potential development. Pressure. So I don't think we should eliminate that. Again, it doesn't mean anybody has any intention of developing it any way. Matter of fact, my personal opinion, there are some areas in there that I'd prefer not to have developed. And what that gives us then though is the information and the ability to. Either make code plans or zoning. To. Stop that development in those areas that we don't. So I would strongly recommend keeping it in there for that purpose. So that, again, the city, the commu- the community, the commission, they know what some of the. Developers or, or landowners are thinking about. So I, I think it would be a wasted opportunity if we took it out. That's my only comment.
Let me just clarify, Brian, really quickly, just to make sure. So you, would, would you be in favor of taking out? One of those maps, the two point seven, but you would like to keep, okay.
Sure, I, we can keep both. Keep both or one. I think we need to add at least one though. I, I would not support eliminating both.
Okay, sorry Stacy, go ahead.
Well, I just wondered, can't we just substitute the merge three point four and three point three for the two point seven? Then it shows both the annexed land and the land.
I'm fine if we merge too, just as long as we have that. Areas facing development pressure. I think it's important to have all of those parcels identified. Again, because I think it's very good information for all of us.
So I guess. Do we need a motion or anything?
If you're ready for a motion, let's go for it.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to. Merge the maps of the city. Three point four and three point three, three point three and three point four. And have that be placed in the growth policy and also be placed in. Place of ETJ two point seven.
Do we have a second?
Give me a sec, I'm looking, I'm looking really quick. Kind of, I'm trying to hold it together.
Taya, that was a second correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Let's go for the vote. Shannon.
Madam Chair, can we have point of order? Could, could we repeat the motion again, please, before we vote?
Sure. Stacy, do you want to repeat the motion?
Basically, if you look at the maps in the city growth policy on page twenty six. You have map three point four, the preceding map is three point three. You put, they, they combine together and you show distinctly the city boundaries that have been annexed. And the lands that are. Getting pressure for development. Into one, okay? Then because that's exactly the same map, same areas that are facing development pressures in the ETJ. We would just put that one map that has it combined to, so that you would also see the city limits. In the ETJ. In place of map two point seven in the ETJ.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, the motion reads. The motion is to merge three point four and three point three. And place in the growth policy. And in place of. Two point seven in the ETJ. We have Stacy with a motion and Taya with the second. Shannon Holmes.
Four.
Brian Conkle.
Four.
Stacy Jovic.
Four.
Melissa Noons.
Four.
Corey Lyons. Taya Crowley.
Four.
And Jesse Wilcox is four. Okay, motion passes. Alright. Moving on. Let me find my agenda here. Okay, so next up. So back to future land use map exhibit one point one. And one point two, and we have had public comment and some board discussion on this map already. Or have we? Matthew, is there anything you want to start off as an intro to these? Eleven point one and eleven point two.
The only thing that I'm going to repeat, you've heard basically all the changes that have made. I would just ask that public comments stick very strictly to exhibits eleven point one and two. And that we don't repeat public comments that we've already had, since we're already at, I think, hour two here.
Thank you for saying that. So we'll open it up to public comment. Can I ask Matthew a quick clarifying question about before? Yes, go ahead. I just. Know that these are different than our current zoning. So maybe before the comments start, could Matthew explain like? What these maps mean and what they're in, like, the reason that they exist in this document, basically?
Yep, absolutely. So basically. What this is showing is the proposed future. Land use, and I know I'm just repeating the map title at this point, so it's not particularly helpful, of these areas. What you would generally use a map like this for is if the city were to, or if we had a private individual come in for. Some zoning, sort of zoning amendments. We would look at the map and see if it was consistent with that. It's also. Showing what the city. And I shouldn't, I shouldn't keep saying the city, I should say what the growth policy, which is the city and the public. Desires to see in the future and the land use in those areas. So for example. If you look at exhibit point eleven point two. The whole south side of Park, other than the highway commercial and the area shown as central business district is shown as high density residential. That's basically indicating that what the city has heard from all the public comment is that we want more infill. And more density on that side of town. So the future land use map tells us and tells the public to. Examine the zoning there and potentially update the zoning to be consistent with that. Or if someone is proposing to change the zoning, that they are consistent with that and that is something that the city desires to see. So basically, it's indicating. What we would like to see both from a regulatory sense in the future and. What the form or land use of the city is proposed to be moving into the future. That's not to say that the zoning will change overnight or potentially at all. And it's certainly not to say that. Just because the future land use map shows all that area is high density residential, that there's going to be a bunch of. Five story apartment buildings that are going to pop up three days after the growth policy is adopted. It's basically just saying this is what we've heard the desire for the future land use to be in these areas.
So. Question. Just, Matthew. So these titles. Were kind of randomly assigned. They weren't necessarily based on recommendations from. Any one person. It's not a definite. It's not set in stone. Oh, this is manufacturing or this is mixed use or whatever. Is that what I'm hearing?
So it's not set in stone like zoning. So it's not going to lay out specific uses. There are broad categories. Of these uses in chapter three that set out sort of density ranges and, and the type of form you're going to see in these areas. But it's not going to be like zoning where it says R three, this is the maximum density, maximum building height, maximum number of units, things like that. It's basically going to say the desired land use for this area is a residential density. And I can't quite remember the number for a high density. I think it's something like between fifteen and twenty five dwelling units per acre. And that. Gives a general idea of what the form of the city. That the form of the city potentially could be moving into the future.
So if somebody has a disagreement about the type of use. Is tonight the time to say, well, I don't, I don't want mixed use, I want high density or I want low density. Is that what you want to hear?
Specifically relating to the map. So I.
Thing to the map.
Yes, so if someone thinks that, say, the central business district. Area on the map is too large or too small or should extend to the north side of the tracks or something like that, that's exactly. What we're looking to hear and that's exactly what I'm looking to hear from you all so that we can go back and make those updates that you want to see and bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, and then I believe you could answer a question that was asked from the public earlier. Which was, why was the central business district expanded to the, the, the. Area that it is on the map?
It was expanded because we heard over and over again, focus on downtown, more infill. More mixed use, commercial areas, which is basically what the central business district is. So that's why it was expanded. But it's certainly worthy of a discussion this evening.
And, and though, what does that mean when you say it's already, it's already built in there? So what financially? What is the impact of expanding that? Central business district?
Nothing until someone were to either develop those parcels or change the zoning on them. The growth policy wouldn't have any. Immediate impact. It's, it's just a guide. So unless someone takes action on that, there's, there's no impact.
Then I change it.
It's basically, it'll, it shows us what we'd like to see. So if someone, someone were to. Make a regulation update, or if the city were to pursue a regulation update, for example, expanding the central business district zoning. It would be consistent with that growth policy. It's basically guiding us on how we. In our case, because we don't have a lot of financial incentives, most of what we do is through regulation. It's mainly guiding us on how we will regulate and zone the city in the future. Some incentives can be included with that and there are certain. Special districts like the business improvement district that could also take cues from the growth policy, but it's really just a cue at this point.
Okay.
So may I please make a point to, to Stacy's question about process? Thank you. So. I think that it is. Going to be somewhat difficult. In the constraints of this meeting to incorporate all of these. Verbal comments by the public into something that's visual and spatial in this map. And I think that this map, eleven, eleven one and eleven two. Are, have the potential to be the, the most salient elements of the growth policy. And so. I think that we should consider, and now this is, this would be explicitly with Matthew's stated commitment. Having Matthew with, with the help of the board potentially. Facilitating some type of virtual shret about these two maps. A shret is typically an in-person process where people put their hands on a physical map and say, I envision this here, I envision this here. And I think that basically with these, with these verbal comments. It's going to be really difficult in, in tonight's meeting if we push this on to, to the next meeting. And then the next meeting after that, I think it's going to be really, it's going to be a very challenging process for us to verbally express. What we think is somewhat of a consensus of the board and the community of how we're going to change or. Or modify or adopt as they currently stand these maps. And so. In my understanding, really the best way to do that kind of process of like incorporating. Public opinion into something that's visual and spatial is through, is through a shret. And I'm sure, I'm sure Matthew is familiar with that process. I, I don't imagine he's necessarily done it before, but I know, I'm sure he knows what it is. And I think that that's going to be really the, the most effective and efficient way for us to incorporate. Our, our opinions as a board and the opinions of the public into what I think is probably going to be. The most salient element of our growth policy, which are these two matters.
Hey. I don't quite understand, since I don't know what a shret is and I don't know how you do it over Zoom, so I guess I need further explanation.
Sure, so. As far as how to do it over Zoom, that would be, there probably are very few examples. Out there. I, I've, I've heard of a few resources. But I, I'm not familiar necessarily. And I, and again, this is, this would be something that we could only pursue with. Like with Matthew's stated commitment, because a lot of this is going to fall on him. And, but, but it, it typically shretts are used for like small area plans. Or for incorporating community input into, into design. And so they're not, they're not necessarily used su- super often for, for a larger area plan like the whole city of Livingston. But basically, it's, it's a way that people can get. Can, can actually see the visually what these principles that they're, that are. You know, either in a growth policy or being discussed by planning or zone, planning board or zoning board. And see what they might represent and, and give their input in a more tangible way than just saying. This, this, this designation on this exhibit, on this page, I, I don't, I don't agree with that. And so it, it's, it's basically a more interactive and hands-on way to, to get community input on, on, again, I, visual or spatial elements of the planning process. And if Matthew wants to, to chime in or add what, what your understanding of a shret is, I'd, I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, sure. So we did do, and it was before my time with the city, but I know it's occurred. There were several shret-type processes that happened already in this process. At this point, I have yet to hear any specific comments on eleven point one or eleven point two. All the comments I've heard have been on the extraterritorial jurisdiction. So let's move through with public comments. My initial reaction is that because we already did a shret, and we already went through the whole public input process, it's not the time to reopen that. We're really at the final stage, or we need to get down to the, to finishing this up. But let's see where we get with public comment and board comments tonight, specifically on this map right now. Because so far I haven't heard anything on it. And I just saw a whole load of hands fly up, so I'm sure I'm about to hear something.
And Matthew, could you just also reference, or I'd like, I'd like to reference that in the growth policy, table three point one has the description and all the different kinds of land use categories. So if somebody has that in front of them, then that might be helpful to distinguish between low density and medium density, et cetera.
And I should add, and it's not going to be in any of your packets, that the appendices beyond appendix A in the draft growth policy do show all of those public input processes, and at least the summaries of the responses to those.
Okay, are we ready to open it up to public comment? Okay, I have the timer.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Shannon?
I have, I have just have one more point of clarification. So, you know, it's my understanding, we all mutually agreed about exhibit three point three, three point four, and two point seven. So we did identify and agree on areas facing development pressure. Is the future land use recommendations for those areas identified in three point four, do they ultimately go into exhibit two point eight, or do they need to be included in exhibit eleven point one?
Matthew, can you help answer that question?
Yes. So exhibit eleven point one and eleven point two only show areas currently within the city limits, so they're not showing those areas facing development pressure. The recommended future land use map for the extraterritorial jurisdiction only shows future land use in the extraterritorial jurisdiction and do show those areas on there. Most of those future or the development pressure areas are not shown distinctly from the surrounding areas, just based on the comments we heard, and to really reinforce that they are not meant to be future growth areas as shown on those maps.
So Madam Chair, may I just, so the area surrounding Green Acres, based on exhibit two point eight, is is identified as agricultural, but we know that it is, I mean, it is si- single family, it is probably low, low-density residential in that whole area surrounding that. And may, maybe I'm getting too far in the weeds here. I'm just I just
You're saying, Shannon, that, that because it doesn't show on a map eleven point one, if you overlaid the ETJ land use on top of that, you would see that it has both agricultural and residential.
And where are you seeing, and where are you seeing that, that Stacy?
Oh, well, I, I drew it, I drew it onto my map of eleven point one.
Okay, okay, all right. So, well, that's
I drew it in there so that I could kind of see in other areas as well where it over, overlaps.
Okay, well, I, I think we're more or less on the same page, and maybe I can bring this up in more detail later.
Right. I'm hearing a lot of overlaps of maps. I wonder if that's something we can talk about. Okay, anybody else want to China before we open it up to public comment? Okay, let's open it to public. Oh, I'm sorry, Stacy, did you have something?
Well, I don't know whether it's just a point of clarification more for Matthew, but I think in the future on these maps, it would be beneficial if there were some roads put in like that the bottom, the southernmost end is Shamrock Lane, or that, you know, the cemetery, or that is on there, or that the, where the hospital is, so that there is some grounding of boundaries, just not everything, but just a few, so that, that you have a sense of where you are.
Okay, thanks Stacy. Okay. Ready for public comment? All right, Matt, so we are going to open it up to public comment. We are commenting on map eleven point one and eleven point two. Recommended future land use map detailed, and the recommended future land use map. We'll pull it up. I will start the timer, and I'm going to do my very best to try and hold it up so you see where you're at, although it's probably backwards. My apologies. I don't
Jesse, if you're ready for it, I've got several hands up.
Yeah, go ahead, because I can only see one person in the chat right now, so if you have some people, go for it.
So the top of my list is Chris King.
Hello, everybody, and congratulations on your really superhero staying power for these epic meetings and over the mo- many months. I really appreciate your energy and, and your focus and attention to detail. I love the changes from the earlier version, and I'm specifically referring to this map. I'm happy as the Executive Director of the Livingston Business Improvement District to see the central business district open. It is really an efficient use of a lot of economy for both local shopping and for tourism. And so I applaud that. One of the things I hear also is the Executive Director of the Convention Visitors Bureau and the Tourism Business Improvement District, is that the people who create jobs, the business owners and managers really struggle with staffing, and their number one issue is affordable housing, and which comes into high-density residential. Not only is it more affordable, but also the transportation issues are much less of an issue as long as it's near where those businesses are. So those are really important values, and I love seeing that much high density and infill. What I'm, this is a question more than a comment, and that is it seems that it's limited to the one place, and I'm curious about it not being on the other side of the tracks where I live. Ooh, I didn't do my intro. Chris King, four twenty-five, West Chinook, sorry. And right in my neighborhood, which is actually pretty high density, it's right across the tracks near the depot. And that is, there's no high density on, on this side, and then I assume it's, there's some implication of that in the mixed use. So my question is, can there be more high density in some of these other areas also, because they are also contiguous to a lot of the businesses? Thank you again for all your great work.
Thank you, Chris. Who's next, Matthew?
I've got Jonathan Henger is next.
Yeah, Jonathan Henger, five nineteen West Park Street. I just wanted to make a quick comment. I think this map is really great. I was excited to see it. I think it really reflects a lot of the public comment we've received up till now. I don't think that there ever really was a shret or shret-like activity done for in-town, and, but I do think that this map really reflects the input we've heard so far. The only shret dot map activity was an online survey that was, and that was ETJ, but I do think that this map is really great, and I think that with a lot of the comments that we've heard about needing higher density and infill development, I think that something like this map, along with other goals and incentives to help lead to more infill and redevelopment downtown, I, is exactly what the public has been asking for. So I think this is a great map. Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Next on the list, I have Erica Light, Lightheiser. I'm sorry if I pronounced your last name wrong.
Thanks, everybody. This is Erica Lightheiser. I live at five twenty-eight South Eighth Street here in Livingston. I'm really pleased. Thank you all. I'm really pleased we're looking specifically at the maps tonight. I think this is really important. I'm a super visual person, so when I first read the growth policy, the first thing I looked at to wrap my brain around the goals and priorities of the growth policy was the future growth map. I'm super happy with the modifications that have come about in eleven point one and eleven point two. They do a much better job of incorporating public comment and can really convey the goal of prioritizing infill development. And it provides some detail on what we are actually envisioning for some different areas. I do have concerns that these new maps are not really consistent with the ETJ map, two point eight. So I'd like to suggest that we kind of harmonize eleven point one and two point eight, so that the colors and whatnot are consistent. In two point eight, for example, all the existing city streets are void of color. So if someone was to only look at that map, they would come to the conclusion that we're simply looking at areas outside of the existing city footprint for development. Instead of, and then also instead of the low-density residential and agricultural land on the outside, why aren't we overlaying natural areas? I think some of the areas on the periphery are public lands, so I think that should be incorporated into this map. Let's see. Also, I think it'd be really helpful if we had a prioritization heat map, I guess, on this map, so that, you know, we could identify where are we looking to grow first. Obviously, our city, our existing city infrastructure was not all created equally. Some places have sidewalks and boulevards are close to schools and grocery stores and services, and therefore are more walkable and bikeable, while other places don't have that infrastructure. So I'd like to see our downtown core by, be identified as sort of the highest priority for redevelopment, infill development, et cetera, and kind of go out from there. So maybe we could use colors, show, like, yeah, like I said, sort of a heat map of these are the places where we want to grow first, and I think that this way we could also identify the areas that need more investment to improve the infrastructure. One other issue that I see on this map is the north side, looks like it's still pretty neglected in terms of natural space and community commercial. I'm pleased to see that in the vision of this map, there's natural areas on the south side of town, but I think there should also be a vision for natural areas surrounding the north side, and open space bordering the north side neighborhoods. Also, I think, you know, maybe some community commercial opportunities on the north side of town, so that folks up there can get a gallon of milk in their neighborhood, or something along those lines.
Hey Erica, you're pretty much at your three minutes.
Okay. Yeah, and just, just to wrap up, finally, in an early meeting, I heard the really good suggestion that the city should create a couple-of-page summary document of the growth policy. And so this map will really be a great indication, and so as much as we can convey in this map as possible is better. So, sorry about that.
Thank you. That's okay. Thank you. It's hard to make you rush. Okay. Who's next?
We have Ms. Love.
Okay, Daniella.
Um, hey. So I'm just looking at the maps with my little phone, so it's really hard to look at them, but, so going off. Eleven point one and eleven point two. So the high density is, from my understanding, a lot more homes. Is that correct? Hello?
Uh, yes. There are definitions for what high density is, and it, it's but yes, it typically means more dense, densely populated areas.
So my concern on the map is that I see a lot of high density near the water, and not a lot of park and open space, and, and I want to echo Erica and Jonathan too on their comments. And knowing the community, so when I look at it, I'm just, I would like to see more greenery around the whole community on the south and north side, as well as not so much high density near so much of the water. And, and like Erica said, commercial use on the north side and more groony on the north side. And and the little space, let's see, this is community facility. Is that where the civic center is now? And is that still a potential space for the wellness center that was, are the I think it's in the wellness plan that I haven't heard too much about, about the new facility that would have like an indoor pool and just an upgrade of the facility that's kind of there now. Is that still something that's in the works? And so I just wanted to comment about the concern about the high density near the river and having more groony and commercial on the north side. I do feel like we do, we should have more commercial use on the north side, and as well as like even a little clinic on the north side. It's concerned that there has been multiple times, paramedics have not been able to get across the tracks in time. And so the north side, I think, should have more focus on the possi- like the possibilities. Okay. So I appreciate your time and all your work and listening to everybody, and I would like to see this continually be formed into a way that will harness the environmental side of the community and the growing population of the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniella. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Just had a hand raised from Jennifer Magic.
Okay, Jennifer.
Hi there. Jennifer Magic, six twenty-four, South Third and Bozeman. I just have a, a reaction to this map as a land use planner. I think all of us can see kind of the big difference between the north side and the south side for obvious reasons. But it seems like development on the north side, adding more mixed use should be a consideration. That is a lot of residential, and in this case, medium-density residential that is not within close proximity to some of the services that people need on a daily basis. And I, quite honestly, I don't know what the answer is, because I don't know within that area where might be a good spot to stick a grocery store, or I don't know, and, you know, another school or what, but it's, it's just a reaction I have looking at this map and wondering, you know, where all those people are going to either shop, do business. I see a lot of traffic going from north to south. That's all I have right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And an additional hand from Michelle Baraga.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, Jessie. Thanks. I'll be real quick, and I don't want to repeat anything we've submitted. I just want to share that, you know, I, I really, I really appreciated Tori's comments about a community shret and just recognize that there's, these maps are really complicated, and I And I, as far as I know, we didn't hold a community charrette. There was an online survey where where data was collected. But I don't believe there were meetings with maps or anything like that. And I really thought that was a great idea and that the maps are really the, a really important part of the growth policy. And if we're able to do something like that, I think it would be really for the benefit of the community. And I'm also concerned about too much residential development on the north side when we don't have plans to get people across the tracks and we have a food desert over there and not not enough access to facilities, inadequate connectivity to our trails and parks for community members over there. And I'll see what are the safe routes to school. I think there's a lot of other important things we need to consider before we increase residential development substantially on the north side.
Thanks, Michelle. Any other public comment? One more call for public comment. Last call, public comment. Okay, let's close public comment and and get back into board discussion. And maybe I'll just. Sorry, I turned my flashlight on. So I think a lot of what I heard, and I actually had questions on this too, is that the the difference between having mixed use interspersed with some of this yellow medium density residential, there's a lot of yellow on the north side. And and Matthew, you and I had a conversation as to why. And and it was sort of like you can zone it that way, but you can't make people go there. Do you want to elaborate a little bit on that conversation just to to discuss why that, why it's so yellow up top?
Yeah, I can just use an example, not really why it's so yellow. Most of the area that's in yellow is existing residential uses. If you look up towards, it's very hard to see on here, but Sun Road, we're discovering portion of neighborhood commercial. That is currently zoned neighborhood commercial and none of the uses in that area are neighborhood commercial uses essentially. They're not serving that neighborhood. There's no grocery store. There's no coffee shop. There's nothing like that. So it's just a good example of how even if you put the future land use or the zoning in that way, it doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be a grocery store. That's not to say that we shouldn't add more mixed use or more neighborhood commercial on the north side. That's certainly a discussion that the planning board should have. I will note that the rail yard is shown as mixed use, but the, you know, potential for redevelopment on the rail yard right now is basically zero since it's an active rail yard.
Well, then, Matthew, why is it shown as a mixed use?
There are surrounding areas and the edges of the rail yard that may be potential for redevelopment, especially moving into the future. If we're looking at a 20-year time horizon, especially those areas bordering the neighborhood, we thought were prime for potential mixed use. Obviously, the railroad would have to agree with that and be party to to any of that happening. But you can kind of see the mixed use nature of some of the railroad properties on the north side of Park basically through town.
Jessie, this is Brian. I'd like to make my comments now if I could, please.
I have a question on.
Jessie, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry, Brian. Go ahead.
Sure. I think the, I really appreciate the south side. A lot of the neighborhoods being transitioned to high-density residential. I think that absolutely captures the intent of what we've been talking about for the last several several months. I do wish we could expand some of that to the north side. However, because of our rail crossing problems, all we're going to do is exasperate it, even if we do add another rail crossing. But I would like to see some more high-density on the north side if we can pull that off. Matthew, just FYI, just so I don't have to remember when we get to chapter three, community commercial is not defined in table 3.1. So if we could get that added, that'd be great, please. I strongly, strongly, strongly disagree with the size of the expansion of the Central Business District. I think that expansion has gone into existing residential, a lot of historical neighborhoods. I mean, that's stretching all the way out to Fifth Street if I look at that properly. So. Well, I don't know how far it is. I'm on it. It's going out a long way, though. I would recommend, though I understand again, the the need for, we are doing, we do want infill. And I think we're reaching that goal by the high density, switching to high-density residential. But I strongly recommend that we move the that we change the Central Business District back to its existing boundaries. I think we're just stretching it too much into existing, long-existing historical neighborhoods. And and I'll just lay it out. I'll vote against this if we don't. I think it's that important. That's all I have.
Brian, do you? Do you know what the original boundaries were?
Yeah, if you look at the map. Well, I can't, I can't name them by street, but if you look at exhibit exhibit 3.1, you can see what those are today. So it's, I guess it's probably about Second Street, maybe on this side and maybe C. C Street on the other. Give or take.
Matthew, do you know the answer to that, what the original border streets were versus what they are now?
I am pulling up the previous draft, so give me a second here. I am probably just going to guess in the same way, but be able to give you a general idea.
I think it's Third to D Street.
I am confirming what Shannon says, looking at our current zoning map. Is the old or the new, the current? Third to D is the old.
And if you look on the current map, it goes from Third now all the way to 10th and all the way down to Crawford and all the way over to G.
That's the point of clarification. The Central Business District or future land use only goes to Fifth.
Yeah, and I still think.
It looks, it looks like it's Fifth to E Street.
Fifth to E.
Yeah, yeah. And I still argue, like I said, those are pretty much established residential, long-established, existing residential. And I don't think those should be included in the Central Business District. That that ends my comments.
Oh, shoot. Thanks, Brian. Any other board comment? Sorry.
Question.
Hold on a second. Tori, did you have something?
Yeah, I think if we're, if we're making recommendations to changes on the map, I think that something that would address, I think, the goals of of the growth policy and some comments that that we've heard from the public with respect to like neighborhood access on the north side. I think that if we were to extend that mixed use area beyond the railroad rail yard to the west, I think I envision it basically including the the below-the-hill section that has the grid street network. I think that that kind of street network and that existing density would facilitate mixed use development or be a prime location for mixed use development. So just extending that pink section, and forgive me if I get the colors wrong, I'm colored blind, but extending that pink section west, basically at the bottom of the hill along the the gridded street network there.
Okay, so.
Tori, you saying to Washington School on Front Street?
Which is.
Tori, you're muted.
I I'm not familiar with all the street names over there. Yet.
So that's all the way to Eighth. Eighth Street is Washington School up to Chinook, maybe.
That that's not, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
For mixed use.
And I, 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 just to elaborate what I'm thinking, I think that that can alleviate some of the congestion and safety issues that that future development on the north side might pose by allowing for potential commercial uses to be incorporated into the existing residential area there.
Yeah, there is currently a preschool right on Front Street on Seventh. And there is a barbecue place in that area. Other than that, it's all very residential. Similar to what Brian was saying, very is very much existing residential area. But.
But that is, that's challenged with access to commercial uses. So I think that that potentially allowing some, you know, what what I think we've been calling in the growth policy, neighborhood commercial uses over there would would help with access because they wouldn't have to cross, cross the tracks.
I'd also like to see some neighborhood commercial out towards the Green Acres. If you're going to look at another area that cannot walk feasibly to downtown or to the grocery store. I believe, believe Jean Kefler's that or somebody said that it was four miles from the Star Edition to downtown. Anyway, so you need to have some kind of pockets of some kind of services out in that direction. And also definitely, well, you've got it towards the hospital because that's already designated as mixed use, so that potentially would serve that area.
So just north of Bennett, you think, Stacy? Just north of Bennett Street or north on Bennett Street?
Yeah, somewhere in there. There, that's kind of a commercial area as it is right now.
Yep.
Has commercial buildings.
Keep in mind, Stacy, that not a lot of that is annexed into the city.
True. And is that where those new, those new apartments, though, the townhouses or whatever, they've been annexed into the city, right? The four plexes?
Yep, that's Brookstone, and that's just south of Green Acres. It's shown in yellow.
Right. So there's a gap between Brookstone and Bennett and Gallatin that's in a county. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Well, it should be noted somewhere that that as a possibility at some point, maybe in that area.
I guess my question is, how do you do, does it, how you, how can you make it both? Or can you not? Do you have to choose one or the other?
Can you explain what you mean by both?
So I guess I'm just saying, and I guess I just go by the color. So you're either going to be yellow, median density residential or mixed use. So mixed use means it could be any of those types of, it could be commercial or medium density or high density. Okay.
Okay. I have another question. Just how come? And again, it could be my printer on on 11.1. My printer shows or I I'm looking at yellow for both north and south side residential. But then on 11.2, it shows as orange for the south side and yellow for the north side. But, you know, the density of how close houses are is relatively the same for the north and the south. So why did one get a high-density definition and the other a medium-density definition?
I can address that if you'd like me to.
Sure.
Basically, the south side was given a high-density designation after all the public comment we've heard about infill. The south side is, has the best access to downtown and commercial. And also there are significant constraints with both access and topography on the north side, which is why it was left as medium-density residential.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
Stacy, I think it was because all the public comment promoted more density in in the downtown area. And that's why it got that designation.
But you can't change the structures of the buildings. So, I mean, the structure is the same whether the the south part of town or the northern part of town. So they're equally, the structures are built as close together on the north side as they are on the south side. There happens to be more open land that is on the outskirts of the north side. But they're the same density next to each other. So they should be the same density.
So I think we need to think about it in not what's existing on the ground, but what we want to see in the future. So currently, the north side and the south side, or at least the historic part of the north side and historic part of the south side are relatively similar densities. From what we've heard from public comment, in the future, people are asking to see higher densities, especially around downtown to provide for more housing and more affordable housing. So that's why I would change it.
Okay, but I I guess I don't agree with that because I think that that when you start filling in and cramming ADUs and into everybody's backyard, you have then created just what some people came to get rid of or to to not be next to. So there has to be a way to have. County. Pardon me? They, there has to be a way to have a balance between infill and living in with with some space around you. And I don't think by creating it to make it high-density, we already have the ordinances to have ADUs. So why do we need to have a designation that is a high-density area with the properties that are already built? I just don't think that we need to have the distinction between the two.
Do you have a proposal, Stacy, on what you'd like to change?
Well, I think that that the the density areas between the north and the south are the same. And you can just as well create an ADU on the north side as you can on the south side. And the only difference is that the further away you get from downtown, the more you have to walk or you have to ride your bike or you have to get in a car. But that that to me does not mean that that there should be two different distinctions between density.
The way that I understood what what Matthew was saying is that with this, with this map, we're guiding where we think the most appropriate places for infill development might be in the coming decades. And with the constraints of access on the north side. And with the constraints of access on the north side, having those two different colors indicates that if we are to do infill on one side of the tracks or the other, we think it'll have the least negative impact on the south side than it would on the north side. And that's something I would strongly agree with.
Okay, thank you, Tori. Okay, let's Oh, yes.
Uh, I just, you know, Matthew mentioned topography earlier, and I I do know that the north side, there's quite a bit of yellow where you do not see city streets and you know, they say if we have enough money, we can build a road to the moon. But I mean, there's some areas in those yellow areas that really are unbuildable. I mean, we have very steep and rocky slopes um, up towards um, where the P is above the lettered streets F over through N. Uh, you also have the gully that's not really depicted. And you know, those could be looked at as as natural areas. Um, even though they are currently annexed into the city. I I I envision those staying in their pristine state um, for forever. Just so, you know, we could really get down into the details of this map and and it can you know, on an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper, it's gonna be really hard to depict a lot of that detail, but um, I think the fact of the matter is um, you know, not all of the area in yellow is gonna be cons- built with medium density residential properties.
That's a really good point, Shannon. Thank you. And I think uh, we heard that in public comment that we'd like more green space on the north side as well. So I might just recap the areas that we are thinking about requesting a change.
Can I make my request?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
That's okay. Okay, so first, I'm comparing these maps to our current zoning. So um, we, right now as it stands, would lose some zoning that I would want to keep on the north side. Specifically, we have some R three zoning that I don't want to lose on the north side. Yes, Chris King, that's where you live. Cause we live nearby each other. Um, there's also some neighborhood commercial on the north side near the school. It used to be a grocery store. Now it's the barbecue place, if I understand correctly. So I don't want to lose that zoning that we actually have that exists. And then um, there's public I think it's public, public zoning on the north side that I don't want. That's where the school is. Washington School, and it's lost on the new map. So I wouldn't want to lose that either. Let's see what else. So I got R three. The, did I get the commercial? Neighborhood commercial that exists on the north side I want to keep. Yep, I think it's just called, yep, it's still called neighborhood commercial. The public, okay. Okay, the next thing is, did you guys catch all that? It's just these little pockets here and there where we have like potential on the north side where old zoning exists, and I don't want to lose that. Because if those buildings go away, then they can't come back as commercial properties or as higher density, which already exists and we're used to it. So I don't see a point in getting rid of it. The other thing is I'm concerned about on the, with the R three or the higher density on the south side. The only place where it really concerns me is where it's really close to the river. I think that that's not consistent with what we've heard in the growth policy where people want to be a little bit more cautious near the river. So it's just a couple blocks or a few blocks. I can't count the alleys from the blocks. Shannon probably hasn't memorized. It's just like a little area where it touches. I think there's like maybe lagoons or something back there.
I mean, like South Ninth, maybe?
Yeah.
Or Lock 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 Levin Drive?
Yeah.
Yeah, that area back there that I don't think necessarily would be great for high density, just because the way it's buttoned up against. And I think that we get moose back there still and like different kinds of wildlife, kinda use it as a corridor when they travel along the river. So I don't know that that's appropriate for R three, and I think that might conflict with other parts of our growth pop- this draft, I mean. And then that area. Shannon, I'm gonna ask you to help me, please. That area where it touches the Yellowstone River also where there's some loops. I think that we get like bear traffic and like bear following the river over on that side of town. So I don't want to put a bunch of people up to where it's not safe. Where we, you know what I'm saying? Like I might like to ease back and keep an R two there, since we know it's like kind of a corridor for animals that are coming through town, but I don't remember what that street is. But Shannon probably has it memorized.
It's it's Crawford and East Crawford, and then it goes up to East Geyser, but it's where it goes butts up against the middle school and
Further east Stacy, like out where the alphabet streets touch.
Yeah. It's KNL and M way out there.
I think
Out near where the driving range is and across from Mayor's Landing.
Yeah, like I think there's actually a lot of animal traffic that comes through and crosses over towards Public Works. Around the bridge, and I think that we get a lot of animal traffic down over by Lock Levin. Um, still, so I kind of want to be cautious there, cause I think that conflicts with some of the priorities and other parts. So I might ease up a little bit in those areas, but otherwise I think it makes sense for the reasons that Tori said to allow higher density south. And then, let me see what else I have. Okay, I liked what Shannon said also about areas that aren't buildable, because I live really close to a lot of those areas on the north side. And he's right that it's pretty unlikely that anybody's ever gonna like cut the side out of that hill to build a house. And I wonder if it wouldn't make sense to mark some of those as natural areas, since it's very unlikely that we'll ever get infrastructure through those spaces. And I know that's getting in the weeds a little bit, but I think what it does is it really shows where the green spaces or natural areas are on the north side that's getting towards some of the balance that like Erica and oh gosh, who else said it? I'm sorry, I can't remember everybody that said it. Like talking about the balance on the north side, if we can demonstrate what Shannon already said, that it's not likely that it'll ever be built. Okay, so that's all the like the little corrections I would make. And now I want to say what I like. Some other things I like that we haven't touched on is I like we have some things zoned right now currently that I don't think fit with our current community values. And I like that this map reflects that we should rethink those zoned areas. One example would be the R three zoning southeast of the Yellowstone River. So we have it zoned for high density right next to the river. And this map here shows that actually the community would prefer that stay in natural area. So I like that we're being more are the zoning or this map is reflecting more of the community values as it comes to building around the river there than what we currently have. So I want to make sure we keep that. Okay, that was a lot of words. Do you have any questions or does that make sense about my perspective?
I think I got it.
Can I ask a quick clarification question just for my notes? The areas around Washington School are on Front Street are zoned industrial. Are you proposing those be shown as neighborhood commercial on the future land use map? Or were you talking about different? I know there's a parcel zone neighborhood commercial right behind the school.
I was thinking of the parcel right behind the school. That that's currently neighborhood commercial. And I want to make sure that it stays neighborhood commercial in case that property ever changes hands. Or even if that property stays in the same hands, like it has all the possibilities for neighborhood commercials, cause it's got a nice parking lot, like it's obvious that was an old I think it was an old grocery.
Was an old grocery store.
Yeah. You know, and it's like right next to a school, so it kind of makes sense. So I don't want it to like, if it changes hands, lose something that already makes sense and fits in an older neighborhood. But what were you asking about the, you're asking about, so Front Street is currently industrial and what were you asking me?
I just didn't know if you were just referring to that one parcel next to the school, or if you were also including those industrial areas on Front Street, but I think you cleared it up. So thank you.
We don't really have any, but all that industrial is going away with this map. So I wonder if it would make sense and fit with what um, Tori was saying to just extend mixed use along Front Street. If that fits with like what he was already saying with the street network there, even though he doesn't know all the street names, I wonder if that's kind of what he was getting at.
It is, thank you.
Okay. And I think that then it starts to bring in some of the balance that um, people are looking for when they're talking about mixed use neighborhoods. I think this is what they mean, is that they want us to have pockets of zoning. And Matthew, I don't know what where else would work to diversify the nor- the north side. But I like Stacy's idea idea too over by Green Acres. And Brookstone and keeping an open mind about what's possible in that part of town too, since it's pretty isolated. That is all from me. Thank you.
Any other board? Oh, go ahead Stacy, sorry.
Well, no, I'm just looking at the since we had it brought up about the Voyage Land. So is that currently a color on this map or is it not?
It's not.
I can't tell.
It's not in the city limit, so it's not on here, so it's not part of the conversation.
That's just all future pressure, whatever, that whole in between the red, the two reds.
Okay. Correct.
Oh, and I will add that I'm not mad about what Brian said either. I think he's right that if north, if south Yellowstone went to Central Business District, people might be shocked. Just saying, yeah.
But but isn't it currently goes from up up to Fifth Street? So isn't Yellowstone then currently in it? Or did I did I write down the wrong thing?
Like today, as it stands today in real time, it's not part of the central district. But on this map, it potentially could be.
It would start on Third Stacy, so.
Yeah, a third. That somebody corrected that to the fifth to Fifth Street. So is there, is there a way to have the Central Business District be included on Park Street or like currently that block is labeled uh, commercial and or residential? So is that another way to include that part in the Central Business District by expanding it on that street that is already commercial or residential? Which street? I'm just asking it. Um, so uh, there's Park Street and then it's Calendar. And Park and Calendar um, are zoned, I believe, if I'm not correct, there they can be zoned either commercial or residential. So I was just wondering if you wanted to, as a compromise, include more of the first street of Calendar. Calendar to Park in the Central Business District. Because that's where the the commercial business is.
And change it from
No, I'm not changing it. I'm just adding it. I don't know how you can do both, but you know, it to have more be included in the, that's already existing commercial business in a in the Central Business District. I'm just asking.
Other advantages, Matthew, to changing that?
It changes the way, I I don't know if there are advantages. There's there's pros and cons to changing anything on the map. It's what you want to see. So if you want to see more of Park look like a Central Business District rather than sort of what it's looking like now, which is more commercial that's geared towards Park, I guess I would call it. It's not, it doesn't really feel like downtown, if you understand what I'm saying. It it may be beneficial to expand that area if that's how you want the future of that area to to be.
Brian, what is your opinion on that?
Well, a lot of it's, a lot of it's residential already. I'm thinking of the corner of Main and and Park with the it's housing up above. So it's already there and developed. That that has that way. I would prefer to park for Park to look more downtownish. So um, yeah, I would I would go for that.
Okay. Can I just, oh, go ahead Melissa.
I ask to make sure I'm understanding.
Yep.
Okay, so Stacy, is what you're saying, keep the same block distance width of the Business District. So it's still between second to what did you say? And but then instead
Third to C.
Third to C, thank you. Okay, so from Third to C, keep it that width, but instead the way to expand it is expand the Central Business District into what is currently highway commercial along Park Street. Turn that into the Central District. Is there, so it'd be kind of like a
A T.
Wide T, okay.
I mean, I'm just saying if if the yes, if that would help expand it, it's into an area that's not primary historical residential. And it's already commercial. And it could be improved in its looks or its financial part of the community.
I think that's clever.
Well, thank you, Melissa.
Welcome.
Madam Chair, may may I speak for a second? So let's just look at this more granularly. Everyone have heartache with expanding the Central Business District to E Street that would include the city county building? The Shane Center? All the way up basically to Park Street. I personally don't have any issues with it going that direction. Um, I do understand uh, Brian's concern about it going farther to the west and and ultimately to Fifth Street, but I I don't, I personally don't have any issues with it being expanded to to E Street and including the Shane Center and the city county building and and I know you know, if if the U R A approves expanding the boundary to that as well, there's probably some benefits for entities like the Shane Center and other businesses that are in that area. It does seem to get more residential to the west towards Fifth Street, but you know, we, there is a bed and breakfast on on Fifth Street. Um, so it's not out of the question that there are businesses like that in in residential areas.
Okay. So Shannon, you are thinking Third to E. And then stay the same way south. Okay. Anybody else have any areas on this map that that has not been addressed?
Can you quickly run those? Can I make one area by me again?
All of them or just that?
That's the last one that you said there.
Okay, so I think what the proposal was Third to E Street. Which includes Park. And then it remains, and then no changes as far south as it goes to Sacagawea Civic Center. That distance remains the same. Heading south.
Thank you.
Is Brian, can I make one comment on that thing? I was the one that kind of made a big fuss about it. Um, I'm still not probably that comfortable going all the way out to E, just and encompassing that entire area down to I guess that would be Geyser. Um, there's a lot of, there's a pretty big residential pocket from B to E between Lewis and Geyser. I'm okay with Shane Center and things like that, but but I think anything that's kind of south of Lewis in that corner should still be residential versus commercial business that district. If that makes Commercial business that district, if that makes sense. So cutting a chunk out of that, I'm okay with going to east. Or excuse me, going to E on the north side, but not on that south side. I think that is primarily residential down there and should stay residential. If that makes sense.
I was thinking jogging over at Lewis. Brian, when I was trying to visualize that, which is the road Shane is on. Although I don't know if there are any, there may be a couple attorney. Attorneys offices, but they might be north, north of Lewis or on Lewis, so we could jog Lewis to.
Yeah, I would, I would keep Lewis South, I would keep Lewis South. Residential, high, high density residential from. C to E, that, that chunk, if that makes sense for, so it's about. C, D, E, six square blocks or so. Or not.
Well, we already go to D though, on our current Central Business District already goes to D Street, right? So we're not.
I think it goes to C.
Can you confirm that, Matthew? Because. I think it goes to D.
You would be correct, it goes to D. There is the area south of the city county building. Which is the Shane Center is also zoned, uh, commercial or central business district at this time.
So Lewis to D. South, that, that, that grid, Lewis, south of Lewis to D and Geiser would be the one you would remove from. The Central Business District. And so it's currently Central Business District, so you want to shrink the Central Business District in that part of.
No, so I had to go to the original zoning map. So if you look south of the original zoning map. Boy, it's really hard to tell.
Very small. It's very hard to see what the streets are.
Matthew, can you screen share and like zoom it in and use your mouse?
Is, is the city county building in that block? Neighborhood, commercial. On exhibit three point one.
Can you give us a page number for three point one?
Yeah.
I think you're right, Shannon. So yeah, from that I'd go a block south and then. However, far east to go then to get to E. Well, I guess, because you're not adding much, are you?
Except for Stacy's idea actually adds quite a bit.
And yeah, true.
While to add the Shane Center to the Central Business District for the reasons that Shannon already said.
Right, so I'd be good with extending it a block south. And then three blocks. East, I think, to E, or no, I'm sorry.
One block.
One block.
To where it is on the map, actually, right now.
Right. Or no, it goes one block, like it currently goes to D, I think we agreed upon, so it'd be one bubble block beyond what we see today.
Well. Help me then on the map. You have B because you can see the underpass. Is that correct? B Street is where the.
It's B, it's B on the south side and it's main on the north side.
Right, but I mean, it's, it's where that curly Q thing is, so that's, that's our dividing line. B Street.
Yep, the cursor's on it right now.
Has to be a little bit bigger for me to see anything, but.
So the purple, and the purple is, goes to D currently on this map.
This is the current zoning map, just for an update for everyone.
And what's that, is that light blue, the city county building?
Yes, the area that's showing his neighborhood commercials, the city county building.
Okay, show me where. Where this can, oh, you can't see my cursor. Show me where the city county building is.
It's the light blue one.
The one in the upper right, put it, put the cursor on it. Okay, all right, so I get my bearings. So that's, that's, F is on, I mean, E is on the other, one side. And D then to your left. Okay. And the Shane Center's on the bottom of it. And the purple means what?
Central Business District.
Central Business. So I don't feel very comfortable going much south of the Shane Center there. I mean, I know that's all pretty residential in there.
Right.
And that's Lewis. That's Lewis.
Yeah, so Lewis to Geiser's all residential in there, so I, I wouldn't feel comfortable. Thinking that Central Business District.
So Lewis to D maybe is where we want that jog to go, Lewis to D to, to Geiser.
It's currently on D, I think. That edge of the main purple's D, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right. So I'd say we, I'd say we want to keep that existing boundary on the south side there. But on the north side, taking. Stacy's idea of putting, of expanding it on Park Street. All the way out that far.
What's the blue, the regular blue?
Public.
No, regular blue is highway commercial.
Sorry.
So we want to go, so we're thinking of extending, so we want to turn that blue into purple, correct? Can you zoom out a little bit, Matthew, and see how far that blue goes over? So do you just want to go to, to. D here over, all the way over to. Maybe it must be third. D to third and then Lewis. North. Are we on the same page?
Can I just try to summarize really quickly to make sure I'm understanding what you're asking? So basically, you're talking about using the existing boundaries of the Central Business District zoning. But extending that all the way up to Park, so there's no highway commercial between those two boundaries of the, sort of the existing Central Business District.
Exactly.
What's the drawback from changing highway commercial to Central Business District? I'm trying to think of like in terms of like land use or zoning, doesn't Central Business District allow for more? And then it changes things like Shannon was getting at, the other tools that people in the community use, like the U R A. Or. The conventions and like the C V B, like it, it allows for more tools for business owners, right? If it's Central Business District.
So I'm gonna, it's my duty as a planner to again impress that this is not zoning, it's future land use. But under current zoning, Central Business District. In a lot of ways is more permissive. So it, it basically would be a more permissive zoning and there's. The U R A could use it to expand their boundaries, but that would be up to them in the future. But basically, if you were to expand. That Central Business District into. Those areas that are currently shown as community commercial on here. It's basically indicating that we want a form that is more similar to Central Business District. Than the current highway commercial form, or I should say community commercial form.
Okay, so then why did the Central Business District want to expand so much into residential neighborhoods?
The Central Business District, basically, we had changed it to. Take into public comment for infill and more focus on downtown, but from what I'm hearing now. That's not what you all want to see, so that. If you do end up voting on this and vote on that change, we will make that change for you.
I guess I, I mean, you, you have infill, but you already have the, the structures there. You already have the zoning for ADUs, so it's not going to make any difference for infill. So I'm, I'm trying to understand why the Central Business District would benefit from residential housing. Being in there, are they going to tax the bigger district? Is it? It, residences, residences are residential, they're not business, so I'm, I'm not quite clear on. Expansion into the residential neighborhoods.
Again, it's just. Yeah, go, go ahead, Jesse.
I was just gonna say you can build up Stacy, so there can be more residential downtown. That's my understanding of it, you know, the buildings do exist, yes, but many of them are not used for residential, but could be. That was my thought on it. Sorry, Matthew, if I'm on the right page.
Hey, and Jesse, just a point of order, it is nine fifteen, so we probably need to get to a, get to a culmination point here.
I agree, thank you. And can I speak to Stacy's question also? I think it also would allow potentially for more. Uses near downtown where there's also, I mean, I'm sorry, where there's already businesses, so it allows like. Like things to grow near like things. If there's a demand for it in Livingston, then it would concentrate the same type of growth next to each other rather than it being sort of. Scattery, so it allows like concentrated development where it already exists. And of course, it's up to the people who own the property, what they do with the property, like. You don't just change the zoning and then magically things, you know, change and.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll just add, Melissa makes a really great point. And basically, the market's going to dictate what gets built. And so what we're doing with. With this planning process is saying in the future, we hope that this zoning follows these recommendations. What that zoning is going to do is allow for those types of uses if the market dictates that that's what. If there's a latent demand for that, if there's no latent demand for that, if it's. If, if, if people own their homes in a residential neighborhood and they don't wish to sell it or, or develop it. It's not going to change, it's going to stay the same way. But if there is a latent market demand and that new use is now allowed, then that will manifest in development.
Okay.
Okay, so I agree with Brian, it's getting late. Let's recap what we've said and then. I just might need a clarifying, do we need to make, so we're going to ask for, it sounds like we're going to make some changes to this. Map. Do we need to make a motion to request Matthew to you, for you to make these changes? Is that what we need to do? Okay. Okay, let me recap the changes that we heard and then we'll talk about a motion. So we're going to start from northeast. So we are looking at the Green Acres area, looking to add some mixed use. To. The area where the Brookstone and or Bennett Street. Area is. We're also looking to create mixed use on the north side of town from. Extending from the railroad at Fifth. All the way over to Eighth Street and up to Chinook. We also would like to put natural areas in, in green. On the north side hill where it is. Undevitable, able. Most likely. Then if we're heading towards the south side of town, we would like to change. The area bordering the Yellowstone River by Lock Haven to Ninth. From high density residential or R three down to R two. Or. Maybe we want to call it medium density on the land use map. And then for the Central Business District. We would like to. Keep the existing CBD. But expand. Park Street. Expand the Central Business District. Along Park Street from third. To D. How do we feel?
Can I make a request that we do one change at a time with one motion, just so we don't have to try to talk about all of them at the same time?
Yes, so one motion per area. Okay, and I, and I might just, the other area that we talked about, and I'm sorry, I. Was the high density residential along K and L and O. Okay.
Can I add something?
Yes.
I think that it would be wise to retain the high density and. Commercial and public zoning. On the north side also that currently exists.
Commercial and what type of zoning?
I think it's R three. Commercial and neighborhood, commercial and public.
Okay.
And it's just little pockets.
Okay.
Except for the. R three is actually like a four block strip between Chinook and. Front.
Okay. All right, we need some motions. Who's up? I'll make one. I'm going to go first. Ready? I make a motion that we. Add mixed use. To the areas north. Of Bennett. Into the Green Acres. And this little piece by Bennett. Street.
Can I make a quick, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Several of those areas are in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Do we want to make that change on that map or this map or both?
Well, we're not talking about the ETJ yet, so my suggestion is we stick to this map right now. And then we'll ask public comment on the ETJ when we get to it. So I suggest we change it on this map. And, and only in the city limit.
Current, current city limits.
It's Brian, I second that.
Thank you.
Motion.
Okay, roll call. Shannon. Holmes.
No.
Brian Conkle.
Four.
Stacy Jovick. Or Melissa Newt.
I just need to see where it is, I'm sorry, on the map.
Can you pull the map up, Matthew, please? So you can see this little chunk in green that says R three. And then the chunk of green that says R three up here.
So not actually Green Acres, but just Brookstone.
Brookstone, just south of it.
Okay, four.
Okay. I'm sorry, Tori.
Taya, or Tori.
Uh, four. Sorry, I wasn't sure if I was muted or not.
You're good. Taya?
Four.
And Jesse is four. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay.
Jesse, I'm going to make a point of, I'm going to make a recommendation that you start every, every motion, seeing you've got them written down.
Sure, I'm on it. Ready? I'm, the, my second motion is. I, I make a motion to extend. Mixed use. On the north side, starting at Fifth Street. To Eighth Street, north to Chinook.
I second.
Okay. For the vote, Shannon, Holmes.
Four.
Brian.
Four.
Stacy.
Four.
Melissa.
Four.
Tori.
Four.
Taya.
Four.
And Jesse, four, motion passes. Now we're cooking. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we change the central business district to include Park Street from Third to D. Uh, and south to Lewis. And follow the current central business district.
Clarification, is that Lewis, East Lewis and West Lewis or just East Lewis?
It's East Lewis to D, south to Geyser, which is where the current business district is.
Oh, seems like.
We're following now.
On the map, it goes below Geyser.
We, we decided not, the central business district does.
Stop at Geyser, just, I'm just clarifying.
Okay. Do I need to say the motion again, or do I have a second?
Uh, can I clarify the motion? Are you saying keep the existing, it might be easier if I now want to make sure I understand this, keep the existing, keep the existing commercial business district, except for extend it north to Park Street? Is I thought what we had agreed upon.
Yep, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not, not what's on the map, but the existing central business district.
The exist, exactly. Okay, if that's what your first motion is, then I, I second that, yes.
Okay. Here we go. Shannon Holmes.
Four.
Brian Conkle.
Four.
Stacy Jovick.
Four.
Melissa Newts.
Four.
Tori Lyons.
Against.
Taya Cr- Crumley.
Four.
Jesse is four. Okay. Motion passes. Okay, I am going to make a motion that we change the area from Lock Haven to Ninth Street north to Crawford from high residential to medium residential. Period.
I second that motion.
Shannon Holmes.
Four.
Brian Conkle.
Four.
Stacy, Stacy Jovick.
Four.
Melissa Newts.
Four.
Tori Lyons.
Four.
Taya Crumley.
Four.
And Jesse is four. Okay, that motion passes. Uh, I'm going to make one more motion. I recommend that we change the area from South K, well, South K to O to View Vista from high density residential to medium density residential and thank you for pulling that back up again.
Second most, I second the motion.
Okay. Shannon Holmes.
Four.
Brian Conkle.
Four.
Stacy Jovick.
Four.
Melissa Newts.
Four.
Tori Lyons.
Four.
Taya Crumley.
Four.
And Jesse Wilcox is four. Okay, motion passes. Good job. Okay. It is, uh, the time of the tone is nine thirty.
I want to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I want to make a motion that we retain that current zoning on the north side. Um, and retain the current R three neighborhood, commercial and public. I think that's what it's called, public, on the north side, that we retain it. Rather than reverting to R two. Is there a second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Stacy. Okay, roll call, Shannon Holmes.
Four.
Brian.
Four.
Stacy.
Four.
Melissa.
Four.
Tori.
Four.
Taya.
Four.
And Jesse is four, motion passes. Thank you, Melissa.
Can I make one more? I think there was.
Go ahead.
No, I wanted to make a motion that we have the map reflect natural areas on the north side that are not buildable.
I second.
Okay. Shannon Holmes.
Four.
Brian.
Four.
Stacy.
Four.
Melissa.
Four.
Tori.
Four.
Taya.
Four.
And Jesse is four, motion passes. How'd we do? Any other motions before we move on to the next agenda item? Which is the E T J, which we have on our schedule for next meeting.
Good.
And we have had quite a bit of comment tonight on the E T J. Um, so uh, I would, I, I might consider, or, or what does everybody think about pu- putting the E T J to the next time, or do we want to keep moving forward?
Next time.
Can I quick, hey Jesse, can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Since we've had approximately fifteen members of the public hang out with us for
Okay.
what is going on, two hours now, three hours. Um, I would ask that you just take public comment on this item, and even if you're just going to push it to the next meeting, just to be fair, because they did hang out all that time.
Thank you, Matthew, that's a really great comment. Um, okay, so we will take public comment on the E T J. Um, please limit your comments to the E T J, I'm going to get my timer ready. And um, Matthew, if you want to let, let the first person go for it.
But, but, but I thought we were just going to ask of, for comment if it's uh, about maybe discussing it at the next meeting, is that? Did I misunderstand you, Matthew?
I would ask that we just take general pub- public comment on the E T J, since it was on the agenda and we do have a number of people that have been here.
Okay. Good.
I'm also not seeing any hand raised, so uh, we may have run out of energy here. It looks like Jean is trying to get my attention.
Jean, would you like to make public comment?
Okay.
Hey Jean, you're muted.
Lower left.
Oh my gosh, and we're so wanting to get this over with. Um, I live at ten ten Swingley, and I'm making this comment on my behalf and on behalf of Friends of Park County. Um, first of all, Friends is happy to forego our comment until your next meeting. We would also like to say how we admire the order and the focus and the openness and the mutual respect that has characterized this meeting. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Jean.
And I do have a hand raised from Michelle Ubraga.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, thank you guys. Um, I just want to make sure that we can still comment at the next meeting and I would, I would wait, I prefer to wait to do that. Just want to make sure that it clarified that that's a possibility and thank you all. It's getting late, appreciate you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with a comment? Second call for public comment?
I just want to say thank you. It's late, but you guys are really doing it. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
That was Daniella Love, Stacy. Okay, last call for public comment. Okay, not hearing any public comment. Um, I don't think I have to go through any of these. Do we have any more board comments, final comments from the board before we wrap up?
So I, I had made a note that I forgot to share and it also in line, was in line with uh, a public comment that we got earlier. Uh, I'm very happy to, to discuss this next meeting, but it has to do with um, creating an additional map of of priori, of priority development areas. I think that that's implied in our future uh, future land use map, but it's not clear. Um, and I think that'd be super helpful information, um, and very digestible, much more so than the map we're currently working on, so I would suggest we either talk about that next meeting or now, but probably everybody would prefer next meeting. But I, I just don't want that to go unsaid.
Okay, we can add that to next meeting's agenda. Right, Matthew? Okay.
I've got a note, uh, Tori, if you wouldn't mind just shooting me an email with that same thing in it, so it's uh, on my list and uh, we can definitely try to get that done for you by next meeting.
Taya?
Um, I was, I was inspired by Stacy's remarks where, or when she was always overlaying the maps. Uh, and I thought that was really helpful and I think um, for that E T J map, one of the things, some of the maps show the farmland really well, like you can see the, the irrigation lines from the water wheels and the pivots. But for some reason on that E T J map, it doesn't show up as well, and I do think it would just be helpful if there, I don't know if there's any way to kind of show kind of what's being used currently in the E D, E T J, like how it's being used. Because I think then that would influence conversation around future use.
There is a current land use map that's somewhere in the E T J. Um, it's not an aerial, it's actually done with remote sensing. Is that what you're looking for? Are you looking for an actual aerial?
You know, so it's funny, the, the map we were talking about recent, just recently of the city, you could see, you could see the, the pivot lines easier than you can in this E T J map two point one. And I know there's other maps and they show the prime farmland and so forth, um, but for some reason on that map, it's grayed out. So it's harder to see how the land is currently being used.
Okay. Got it, Matthew, looks like it. Any other last uh, board comments, Melissa?
Yeah, I am feeling really excited about how much Matthew took what he's heard so far and made it real for us, because there was no small amount of comments that we've gotten so far. And so I think he's given us an excellent starting point for our conversation. So Matthew, thank you for all the work you've put into this to give us a good place to start. And I'm really happy to be on this board with all of you. Each one of you is a rock star and you're awesome, and I love the energy and attitude on the board, so thank you for being here. You're all great.
Thanks, Melissa.
And I would just add that, you know, um, in a process like this, there is no perfect solution and so no matter which side of the project you're on, you know, we're all here to try to, to blend and find the best for everybody. And so um, I hope that the public can also understand that if maybe their one point didn't get actually in the way they wanted, that we, we're just here to try to do the best that we can. And uh, for the best for everybody.
Thank you, Stacy. Anyone else with final board comments? Okay, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate you long haul. Thank you, thanks to the public for sticking it out. Thank you for all the comments and please make sure, if you have additional comments, you can send them in written. And, and show up and, and make comments on the agenda that, that will uh, be presented to you shortly.
Written comments to planning@livestonemontana.org.
Okay, we are arriving at nine forty. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.